So, Mr. Placko, can you please call roll?
Lori Krasny.
Aye.
Lynda Grassi.
Aye.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Alright, can we stand for the pledge allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I'd like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. I do, um, Mr. Placko had provided a copy and emailed us of an amendment that we need to make to the agenda. So I have been to make a resolution to amend the personal consent agenda to add item J regarding the payment of science reading stipends to educators who have completed the applicable professional development requirements under Ohio House Bill 33 of the 135th General Assembly. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Mr. Any discussion? Alright, Mr. Placko, can you call the roll?
Lori Krasny.
Aye.
Lynda Grassi.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Um, I would also like to ask if we can amend the agenda to remove item 15 from our, um, agenda for this evening, based on the fact that we probably don't have enough information and that we should probably talk about it at the table under new business. Can you say what? Sure, item 15 is the building addition to Riverview, and it is the Riverside Local School District Board of Education hereby approves moving forward with building an eighth classroom addition onto Riverview Elementary School and directs the administration to publish a request for qualifications for a design professional and construction manager at risk. Again, I'm just asking that we remove that for further discussion for a later agenda item of that, so happens to be where we like to head.
Is that a vote?
No, I'm asking if we can remove that from the agenda for now.
So will we be second? And I will second? Any discussion?
At least from my perspective, I don't feel like we have enough information to move forward with a yes or no vote on such an agenda item, so that's why I asked for it to be pulled.
No other discussion? Mr. Placko, can you call the roll?
Lynda Grassi.
Aye.
Aye.
That's removing it, correct, yes, thank you.
Denise Brewster.
No.
Scott Fishel.
Nay.
Dennis Keeney.
Nay.
Lori Krasny.
Aye. Motion?
Joe Vail.
Vail, thank you. Alright. I'll make the motion to approve the meeting minutes from August 15th, 2024, September 3rd, 2024, and September 12th, 2024. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Alright, can you please call the roll?
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Lori Krasny.
Aye.
Lynda Grassi.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
And motion is carried. Alright, that brings us to special reports.
Alright, um, I have two tonight. The first, I am really excited that we're back into the school year, uh, and we are going to ask that Mrs. Smolin, Principal of Buckeye, come to give an update, give the board an update about all the great things that are happening at Buckeye Elementary this year. I know we have a lot of Buckeye families in attendance.
Alright.
Down button advances life.
Perfect, thank you. Alright, welcome. Um, on behalf of Buckeye, um, our amazing students and incredible staff, it's a pleasure to, uh, speak with everybody tonight, kind of give you a glimpse into the world of Buckeye for the first month of school. Uh, so first of all, I...
I think you have, you have the remote upside down, so it would be down.
Alright, let's try it again, alright. Alright, so on behalf of our staff, you can see here's our first day of school, uh, ready to go, uh, ready to get at it, and it's a pleasure to work alongside these professionals day in and day out. Uh, it's a pretty, pretty incredible staff. We do have four new staff members that we introduced to the district this year. Uh, we have two new title teachers, uh, Mrs. Heather Lamanna and Miss Unique Little. Uh, they round out our title team that works to support our students, uh, within the ELA and math curriculums. And we also have two new educational assistants that we welcome to the district, Mrs. Karen Biblak and Mrs. Kim Ashley. In addition to those four new to the district, we have, uh, many new staff members that are new to Buckeye, uh, with the wonderful addition of preschool as well as our MD and autism unit. Uh, we bring many new talented teachers and, uh, educational aides uh, to our building as well as, uh, many speech therapists, school psychologists. Uh, we have a new resource officer, Deputy Mike Bruning, who came from Lamuth, who's been a great, uh, addition to Buckeye. So, we are well-rounded, we are happy, things are up and going, and it's been an enjoyable start to the year. To take a look at, uh, One Community, I kind of focus our presentation on, uh, One Community pursuing greatness and getting better every day. So that's how I kind of broke it down. Uh, One Community, our third graders took their very first field trip to Pioneer School, which is an enjoyable tradition that probably many alumni even remember going to Pioneer School. It's something that's enjoyable. Uh, as they were all getting on the bus to leave that day, I said, "I want to hear your consensus when you come back. Is it Pioneer School, is it Buckeye? Where do you want to be?" And when they came back, it was Buckeye. So, uh, things went well, uh, they enjoyed themselves, and it was a pleasurable trip for our first, uh, enjoyable field trip, thanks to PTA, who chips in money to, uh, sponsor our students to go to, uh, our field trips every year. Also with One Community, we have the addition, and, uh, Mrs. Westbrook was going to try to be here. She's on her way, I know. Um, but before she even arrives, and, um, I can fill in her portion of the presentation, she is our assistant principal at Buckeye this year, as well as a preschool director, and I can say working alongside Mrs. Westbrook has been a pleasure. Uh, she brings a wealth of knowledge when it comes from her special ed background, uh, as well as to her instrumental role in MTSS, uh, that we've implemented, uh, full board this year, and preschool. She's, she's a knowledgeable person, she's a very, uh, well-rounded person. She, uh, does an amazing job with our staff and with our students. So, um, she's not here to hear that, but I do, uh, appreciate working with her this year at Buckeye. Uh, so she included in here, uh, just a couple instances of what we have going on at Buckeye. We have two preschool classes that we introduced, uh, into our school this year. We have two AM classes and we have two PM classes. Um, our AM classes go from nine thirty, or eight thirty to eleven, and then our afternoon goes from twelve thirty to three. They're a great group. Uh, Mrs. Douglas and Miss Mateka alongside her, um, staff do, alongside their staff, do a great job with the students, um, and it's been a nice transition into Buckeye this year. Uh, you can see here, they had an apple day, they created apple nachos. Uh, so that was fun, and mind you, our preschoolers are three and four years old. Uh, so it definitely gives a pretty cool caliber to our fourth graders. Uh, when they walk by, they walk up a little taller and, you know, a little prouder, setting the example to our preschoolers who have entered, uh, Buckeye this year. And then, uh, this was also working with apple measurements. You can see there's an apple theme here to go along with the fall. So, uh, it's been a nice addition to welcome our preschool to Buckeye. To move on with, uh, our, our pursuing greatness, one thing that is, um, this is my ninth year as a principal at Buckeye. It's my 23rd year in the district overall, between the Lamuth Middle School, um, and the elementary school at Buckeye. Uh, but one thing I'm super proud of, and, um, Dr. Rotino, when he came on board, definitely got us very data-driven. Um, and our special ed department, working alongside our school psychologist and Mrs. Lanning, along with curriculum with Dr. Malacher, have really implemented a, a great resource that allows us to hone in on students with their MTSS, uh, meetings that we've been holding. We, this past week, uh, we meet each day with a different grade level, our school psychologists, our classroom teachers, along with our title team and administrators to really, after our map testing, which is measures of academic progress, uh, we, we take a look at the skills, and, uh, we are able to sit down and really dive in and look at each kid individually, personalize, uh, their education to what their needs are. And so we've been sitting every single morning, uh, this past week, and will continue next week with math, but this past week has been ELA, and it's been tremendous to sit down as a team, look at the, look at the, each individual student, talk about what they need, talk about how we can get them to the next level and make them feel successful. And those conversations are priceless, and you see a wonderful team working together for the benefit ultimately of why we're all here is for our students. So to sit there in the MTSS meetings, um, I give a lot of credit to Central Office for making those instrumental and making those happen. I give a lot of credit to our school psychologists, our coaches. I see Abby Hartman over there, uh, she sat in, uh, with us this week, and it's just, it's, it's a lot of good things going on behind the scenes to benefit ultimately your children. So, uh, I wanted to make a highlight to that academically, and then that kind of fixes in on what we're doing. We met as a building leadership team this past week, actually last week. Um, and we really dissected the, the school report card, our state report card. Uh, we looked at each individual component, as we did at DLT yesterday too. Uh, but last week, when we looked at it as BLT, and we were able to formulate those goals. Uh, Buckeye received a four as a building last year. That's good, but it can be better. Um, and I really think this MTSS process is going to take us to that next level. Um, and I'm excited to see everybody running all cylinders, the excitement, um, and most importantly, the teamwork to ultimately benefit our kids. So I would be remiss if I didn't mention the MTSS process that's been implemented not only at Buckeye, um, but across all of our elementary schools, um, and buildings district-wide. And now the fun part. It was so fun to watch all of our families walk in, uh, to, to recognize, most importantly, like I said, uh, the wonderful smiles and the faces and what keeps us going every day, our students. Uh, walking through the doors, we have, uh, some pretty impressive kids uh, that come in each and every day, and we have the opportunity to recognize our first round of Portrait of a Beaver Student of the Month. If you're not familiar with what Portrait of a Beaver is, uh, it's one of those, uh, initiatives that we've, we've talked about, we've been spending time. When a student graduates from Riverside or as they're going through Riverside, what are those qualities that we want to instill in them? And to make a well-rounded student. And so that when they leave our doors, we can say, "Yeah, we've tried, uh, we've worked through this, and we're pretty proud of what we're offering out uh, when they leave our doors from Riverside, uh, local school district." So, we talked about in our meeting, our, in our first school-wide assembly for pre-K through four, and pre-K joined us. Uh, might have been a little bit of intimidation for some of those three and four-year-olds, uh, to come up to the front of the room and be recognized, but they did it. And it was really cool to see, uh, and we enjoyed it. So you can see, these are all of our recipients, uh, for that particular, uh, September Student of the Month. Each one of our teachers had the opportunity to nominate one student, uh, based on one of the characteristics that they felt, uh, they demonstrated as a Portrait of a Beaver. So I am going to bring up to the front, I'm going to call down, because I'm not exactly sure who's all here, uh, but I want to recognize all names, and if you hear your name, friends, uh, please come down, and I'm going to share with our, our, um, uh, group here what exactly your teachers had to say about you that was, uh, so special about you for the month of September that made you a Portrait of a Beaver Student of the Month. So starting in our pre-K, if we have Geo Martin or Jade Barkley here, please come down. Do we have Geo or Jade? We have Jade. Jade, turn around and give her a pretty big wave. So Jade was recommended by Miss Mateka, and she said that Jade demonstrates kindness and respect towards all peers and adults in the classroom. She always enters the building with a smiling face and is quick to lend a helping hand to those in need. Area of recognition was high character. Congratulations. Alright, we have kindergarten. Do we have Ella Blakely, Emily Adino, or Jada Reynolds here? Come on down. Yeah, all of them. Ah, okay. I'm going to start off with Emily Adino, recommended by Mrs. Kelleher. Give a wave, Emily. We did this in the assembly too, so we're getting better. Uh, she was recommended for high character. Emily is always engaged in putting forth her best effort during our lessons. She's always trying to help her peers and her teacher in any way. Keep shining, Em. We have Jada Reynolds, big wave, Jada. Jada was recommended for high character. Jada is always respectful towards adults and peers, willing to lend a helping hand, and shows empathy towards others. She always comes to Buckeye ready to learn. Good job, Jada. And we have Emily Blakely, big wave. There we go. High character by Mrs. Jipnowski. Ella always is respectful towards adults and peers in the way that she acts and speaks. She's empathetic towards others and helps those without being asked. She's a role model for others to follow. Congratulations, Ella. Firstly, we have Paloma Franco Marado, Amina Jackson, and Jackson Kaiser. We have Paloma. Paloma is here, recommended by Miss Brozek for high character. Paloma always puts forth her best effort. Whoops, I lost, I was looking at you. She is always willing to lend a hand to anyone in need. She wants to new, learn new things and is an awesome role model. Way to go, Paloma. Second grade. We have Janelle Robles Rocha, Rosalina Soder, and Aurora Harper. Come on down. Rosalina, give a big wave. She was recommended by Mrs. Jenks. Rosalina is kind, respectful, responsible, and has a love for learning. She puts forth her best effort in everything she does. She's been working hard on getting better with her math facts. She's a friend to everyone in class and is an awesome role model. Way to go, Rosalina. Whoops, I lost you. Lost my place. Sorry, we have Aurora Harper. I was looking on the wrong page. She was recommended by Mrs. Ronberg, who's in the back. Mrs. Ronberg, give a big wave. Uh, Aurora was recommended for the area of leader. So a different one. Aurora makes the right choices in the classroom and is a great example for classmates. She helps others and strives to do her best work. Keep it up, Aurora. Nice job. Third graders, we have Lydia Grayson and Liliana. I saw all of them. Liliana Thompson, come on down. And I might add, they all look so nice to me. Alright, Lydia, big wave. I'm going to say Lydia was our two-time, uh, award winner. She won, uh, she was nominated by Mrs. Leehue for high character in third grade, and she was also recommended by Mrs. Stevens, uh, for high character in phys ed. So, uh, she's a two-time recipient on our first round. Not too shabby. Uh, Mrs. Leehue had to say she's respectful and kind to everyone in the classroom, and Mrs. Stevens said she's so positive in physical education. She's happy and she's ready to be active. She's truly a joy to be around and always willing to share a compliment and be a great friend, friend. I will, if you would look at the, uh, screen, uh, there she is. You were so excited. Does that, I think she had everybody in tears during our assembly. So she walked up and she was the most beautiful, like, I mean, genuine, like, just to be receiving that award, she melted our hearts. So, uh, glad Lydia was able to be here to be recognized. Alongside Mr. Grayson Charter, wave your hand. He's high character. Grayson is very kind to his peers and respectful to adults. He has a smile on his face always and is eager to learn and share personal stories. He enjoys participating in all of our class discussions, says Mrs. Lehman, who's in the back, saw her there, yes. And then finally, we have Liliana Thompson, looking nice tonight. She was recommended by Miss Simmons for high character. Liliana's smile, which we just saw, has the ability to brighten any room. She actively participates in class, sets a positive example for her peers, and instinctively offers help without being asked. Her love for learning and natural problem-solving skills truly stand out. Way to go, Liliana. Fourth graders, we have Catherine Adino. We have Eli Rodriguez and Madison Sharp.
No, she just came up.
Yeah, she just got in, okay?
Yes, I, I...
I didn't want you to...
I'm going to, I'm going to circle back to second grade. Ella, big wave.
Yes, we saw you sneak in.
High character by Mrs. Foot. Janelle is respectful, ready to learn, and ready to help. She's always eager to learn something new and puts in a hundred percent effort. I don't see Eli, son of a gun. Uh, we, Catherine Adino, big wave. Catherine Adino was recommended by Mrs. Klimenberg as a leader. Kate is always willing to help out in the classroom in any capacity. She goes above and beyond to help her classmates, and as a leader, it's all she does. Congratulations, Catherine. And Mrs. Viverka, recommended Madison Sharp. There we go. Madison's Portrait of a Beaver recognition was a lifelong learner. Maddie is loving to learn new things and definitely shows interest in learning more about all the things that we do in our class. Way to go, Madison. And finally, we have our special teachers. We had Mrs. Doherty, Mrs. Rusnick, and Mrs. Stevens, recommend JoJo Ricchino, I should say Josephine. Come on down. Mikey Decor, or Miley Decor, and again, Lydia Dawson. Alright, we have Josephine, and we have Miley, and we have Lydia. JoJo was recommended by Mrs. Doherty, our technology teacher, as being a collaborator as a Portrait of a Beaver. She said, "JoJo, uh, loves, uh, always adapts to multiple classroom situations and always remains goal-focused. She works well in groups and has a positive attitude, can handle personal differences, and is able to share credit with others." Way to go, JoJo. And Mrs. Rusnick, recommended Miley Decor for high character. She said, "Miley is respectful and responsible in music class. She volunteers to help the teacher any chance she gets and always has a smile to share." So on behalf of Buckeye, I'd like to share with you our Portrait of a Beaver September Student of the Month award. Let's have our... We're going to make two lines. And this is where I need my kindergarten teachers. They know how to reel everybody in. Alright, let's have the taller ones in the back and the shorter ones, myself included, in the back.
You gotta squish, you gotta squish together.
Alright, let's get in, nice and close.
How do you like each other?
Yep.
It's just for a second.
Alright, Miley, she's in, Miley, go. Miley, come right up here. Perfect. There we go.
Alright, one, two, three. One, two, three. Alright, congratulations.
Nice job. Alright, and, uh, like I said, on behalf of Buckeye, uh, that was a glimpse into our first month of our school year, so, uh, thank you.
Thank you, that was awesome to see. Buckeye families, you are done, if you want to. Thank you so much, um, for showing up and, uh, great job. Alright, so my second report tonight is, um, a month early, uh, but it's the report out on facilities options for immediate needs, um, as I was asked to do at the last board meeting. We were able to kind of put it together and work some hard to, work pretty hard to get it out there. So this is the community feedback portion and kind of what we're doing and all that. Anytime you start with a facilities plan, I kind of always focus on the why. Anytime you're making a big change, the why is important in the work that we do. Um, and the why is kind of comes out of not only our strategic plan, uh, in the area of the strategic plan of fiscal stability, we talk about, uh, we mentioned the facilities improvement investments. Uh, two specific areas and two specific strategic initiatives under that are to complete a facilities audit and generate a tenure improvement plan. We did that with the Vialoski report. Uh, we are working on the, uh, improvement plan and facilities plan as it moves forward. And then the second one is to decrease, is to decrease the disparities between the buildings. Uh, the other part of the why where it's coming from it, and Mrs. Smolin did mention that, uh, is the Portrait of Riverside Beaver and really working to make all of that kind of come together. The three specific areas, first is alignment. Uh, we know that modernized facilities can be tailored to support the competencies and skills identified, uh, in the Portrait of Riverside Beaver, such as collaborator, creative thinker, and innovator. It does provide an easier access for those in those flexible learning environments. Uh, the support for personalized learning can happen in these modernized facilities. A well-planned facility allows for the creation of adaptable spaces that cater to different learning styles and needs. Um, essential for personalized learning. So when we talk about what personalized learning is, it's what that student needs. Uh, you heard Mrs. Smolin talk a lot about kind of the MTSS process, personalizing learning that goes on at Buckeye. Uh, that is, that is something we are pushing throughout the entire district. And the last one is those future-ready learning spaces. So having that comprehensive facilities plan ensures our environments are equipped to evolve with the educational trends and the future demands of not only of our workforce, but also of our, of our learners, fitting that long-term Portrait of a Riverside Beaver. So that's the why as to why this work is happening. Now kind of the what and some of the nitty-gritty as to what's, what's happened going on. So facilities update, so over the last several months, we've hosted several community meetings to discuss both the immediate needs and the long-term needs of our district's facilities. We had a core, a small core group to kind of come up with a, a game plan. We brought in, we put out a survey to kind of put together this larger core group. Had a hundred and, a hundred-plus people in the community interested in being a part of that. So we held random stakeholder meetings throughout the summer, uh, kind of around the Fourth of July. Had forty-some people show up to that and provide some feedback to really iron, iron out and give us some ideas to that. We brought some of those stakeholders into a larger stakeholder group meeting, two in person, and then we filmed, um, I should say, we, I filmed, a, the presentation that we presented at that meeting, and sent it out to anybody who wanted to see it. We posted it on our website. We put it out there really for anybody to provide their opinion, to give feedback. The more feedback we could have, the better. We know, we want to make sure we get that community feedback. Uh, we sent it out to elected officials, uh, we emailed last that to everybody who could get it, put it on social media, all of that. We received over three hundred and sixty responses, which is a great turnout for a week of a survey being out there. So we had three hundred and sixty people who are truly interested in providing their feedback and providing their input towards our planet, towards our future. Uh, we then took those three hundred and sixty responses. I then took those and made an executive summary of the results. Uh, to be completely transparent with those, I put them into AI, a chat GPT, because it eliminates the bias that's there. It did summarize these four themes, and those themes came up. Um, and that was part of the executive summary that came forth. So tonight, going to go over the executive summary a little bit. Then we came back to the last set. We brought the, the, the committee together, both in person and in Zoom, in a final meeting to come up with a consensus decision uh, for our immediate needs and kind of recommendations for the long-term plan. So that happened Monday night. We kind of came together as a, as a, this consensus court committee, came up with our immediate needs and a long-term plan. So in the immediate needs presentation, what was shared, just to kind of give that update, uh, we shared what the issue is and why the immediate needs and why we're acting with, with such urgency. Uh, we know we have elementary classroom concerns at both Riverview and at Buckeye. Uh, we also, I also presented that there are two, there's, I presented two potential solutions for feedback and consideration by the committee and by our community. Option one is an eight to sixteen classroom, uh, addition at Riverview. That allows us to, Riverview is our, one of our most crowded buildings, uh, besides Buckeye. It allows us to move back some special education's classes specifically designed to be in Riverview, which we had to move out. It allows us to move them back. It allows us to regain the music room for music education. It's currently a fifth-grade classroom this year because of the large size of the fifth-grade classes. There's a section being fit there. And it allows additional room for enrollment and growth or expansion resulting from new construction area. There are two, um, there's a development that's finishing up right now in Fairway Pines that is districted to Riverview, There are two, there's a development that's finishing up right now in Fairway Pines that is districted to Riverview as well as the casement development, which is planned. And we know that's a large development that is planned to be starting within the near future. And that is also, that is in the backyard of Riverview, so it would be, right now it sits in the Riverview area. The second option that was presented is the addition of eight classrooms onto Lamute. In that option, that option would be to move all the district's fifth graders to Lamute. We started last year by moving the Buckeye and Melridge students to Lamute Middle School. This would be removing also the Riverview and Parkside students to Riverview. It opens up four classrooms at each, at Parkside and Riverview for some of the expanded needs at Riverview. And then also allowing us to potentially redistrict to alleviate the burden in some of our legacy buildings. If we look at, and I know our redistricting and this is a four-letter word sometimes, but it does allow us to kind of shift and rotate around and move some families into Parkside to fill up some of those classrooms and those spaces and also potentially eliminate some of the students in the modular classrooms in Buckeye by shifting some Buckeye families to Melridge as we, as we move through. So it does, it does require some changes in our, in our districts, but it does allow us to free up space at our legacy buildings. Shared the strengths and challenges of each option. I will be the first one to admit neither option is perfect. I don't think there is a perfect plan in education. Neither, neither of these options is perfect. Estimated cost ranges, I worked closely with Cleveland Construction on those costs. And architectural sketches that we had made up of both of the options, knowing that to be able to see it, a lot of us wanted to just see it and not conceptualize what this looks like. So to provide some of those architectural sketches along the way in terms of what it looks like. In the long-term portion of the presentation, we presented the three options that are there. Presented a new five-eight middle school on the campus ground. One thing that came out of a lot of the initial feedback groups is that some of the community members desire for a new nine-twelve high school and the conversion of the campus, the current campus, to a five-eight building. So we presented that as a second option. And the third option would be a significant expansion to Buckeye, which would eliminate the modular units at Buckeye and adding a gymnasium so that Buckeye would have an equitable space with a separate cafeteria and gym in there as well. Similar to both Parkside and Riverview making Buckeye kind of the third large building in the district. Again, I provided cost estimates for the new buildings based on OFCC's probable cost document. And I used five hundred square foot for the addition to Buckeye when you're adding classrooms. The OFCC, when you use those, those numbers are lower because you're building larger spaces, which don't cost as much. A gym doesn't cost as much as four classrooms, although it'll take up the same space because there's less walls, there's less technology, there's less everything else that comes into it. So when we take into some of those additions, cafeterias are cheaper than, than classrooms and small group spaces and that sort of thing. Shared the strengths and challenges of each option, asked for feedback. And then I also presented, the final present was any facilities plan that we do moving forward, and we talked about this from the very beginning, needs to be comprehensive and serve all community members, not just our students. So we provided some of these additional long-term, not academic facility needs and then also options to consider as to the wants, as to what a facility plan would be considered favorable by our community. In the survey response, which is kind of the primary place where we went to go catch, catch our response, it was a Google form. We presented that to all, whether they're in person or online. We opened it for until last Sunday night. What I was pleased to see is about an equitable distribution of responses based on our community size. So we asked, we asked respondents to identify as to the elementary school that they are districted to. And you can see thirty-one percent were Riverview families, twenty-nine, almost thirty percent were Parkside families, twenty percent were Melridge families, seventeen percent were, I'm sorry, seventeen percent were Melridge families and twenty percent were close to Buckeye. And then others, there's always an other line and people put in some answers for others like, I have a student at Melridge in Lamute. I just go to Lamute. I have a student, so some of those others that made up, the rest of them were just the random things they put in specifically with their situation. I don't have children in the district. We had a couple of those, or I sent my kids to Melridge, but we now moved to Parkside. So some of those answers were put as well. The, the stats geek in me went and looked and said, three hundred and sixty, I'm happy with that number. That's a, that's a solid number for a survey, but is it really significant? So I did a Z-test on it and for all the non-stats people out there, a Z-test talks about the probability and the predictability of a sample size to the general population. So, so how big is that sample size compared to what the general population says? And is it representative of the general population? So in the Z-test, the sample size of three hundred and sixty assumes a plus or minus five percent margin of error. So that's either five percent greater or less of the roughly sixteen thousand four hundred district homes at a ninety-five percent confident interval. So that means within ninety-five percent confidence, we know that these, these documents represent the, the entire pop, the entire Riverside district within plus or minus five percent. So I thought that was really good. And I didn't think it would be that, to be honest, I didn't, I did the ninety-nine percent as well and that was within eight percent. So I, I liked, I liked five, it's an easier number. It's easier for me to do math without kind of working, so, plus or minus five percent. So a ten percent variance from the actual number to the higher or lower. So I thought that was, again, fantastic results, really happy to see. So we did the immediate needs response first. What was, and the question simply was, what was your preference for the immediate needs? Option one, option two, or other, and allowing the others to fill in. Seventy-five percent of stakeholders said option, or seventy-five percent of stakeholders said option two. The eight classrooms and additional Lamute, shift fifth grade to Lamute with the redistricting was their preference. Fifty-three, about fifteen percent said option one, the addition to Riverview was their preference. The other was about ten percent, thirty response holders, and that included things like both. That included things like do what's best for the children, it included things like neither, it included things like how are you gonna pay for this? There were a lot of different, and so we knew it was a good representative sample. There was some, you know, get your stuff together, I'm editing that, that was a comment in there as well to kind of give some of where the feedback really lied. But that was allowing them to provide that ten percent, was, is a good representation of kind of how our community feels. And it makes me feel it's not just parents or students or parents or stakeholders just involved and have immediate impact in the schools. So one of the questions that came up at our consensus meeting is, you know, where did these people truly look at and kind of was it even across the, the ranges? So if they selected Buckeye, I did allow the one that just put Lamute in to stand alone, Buckeye, Melridge, Parkside, Riverview. If they selected those buildings, how did they fare and what were their preferences to see? Does it, is it impacting one school and equitability to the other? In all of the cases, we're looking at a seventy-five percent or greater favoritism towards option two, the eight classrooms at Lamute. Even our, again, even our Riverview families who would get the addition are saying, you know what? It's, we are favoring the, and they gave reasons why. So I'll summarize the feedback and the summary of the feedback as to why. We didn't just allow them to vote and get out. They had to actually provide reasons and explanations as to what their vote was, why they thought that way. If they put a star, we disqualified them, kind of really what we thought their reasons were. And those comments became really fruitful that we analyzed, which I will share next. So summary of the other responses in terms of the immediate needs. So when I mentioned those thirty others, you know, kind of the summary, they, I themed some of those that come out. Some of them, like I said, oh, I switched mine, I didn't switch the thing. Some of them said, I don't like either. Some of them said, it doesn't focus on all schools. We're talking about Lamute and we're talking about Riverview. What about the rest and the legacy schools? Some provided suggestions for alternative. One was buy Hill Road and Haddonback and Haddonback, purchase other schools. Some of them had, again, financial concerns, like I said, how are you gonna pay for it? Some were opposition to current zonings and school closure decisions. They didn't like the fact that we closed the current school. They didn't like the school that they were zoned into and felt they should be zoned into a different school. And that was kind of that. Some of those were, were talking about, you know, that their community and their specific school community feels ignored by this plan. That was a legitimate, and that came up a couple of times. And some was said, before you do anything short-term, we need to figure out what the long-term plan is and kind of a press pause approach to this. So some came out and said that as well. So Riverview, option one and feedback for the addition, that would be proposed to that. The first and foremost one that came out the most is concerns about school size and overcrowding. Riverview's a large building, adding eight more classrooms would make it the second largest building in our, in our district besides the campus. There were concerns about overcrowding in the lunchroom, overcrowding in the playground, overcrowding in the parking lot. Riverview is landlocked, so it doesn't provide the opportunity, excuse me for a second. Riverview being landlocked provides limited opportunities for parking. It didn't matter what option I talked about, somebody brought up the traffic coming into the school and the addition to traffic. That's an issue with every single one of our schools, we are lucky for that. They talked about equity and fairness across the district. There was the rich get richer, I think was one comment. There was more of why this building and not others. My student mentioning the modular units at Buckeye was a common theme that kind of came up with that. There was, some of them were like, you just built the building, why didn't you plan for it the first time? Not understanding that, you know, to set the record straight, we built it bigger than we were supposed to. We built it as big as we could when we built it. We, we knew this was coming, we built the building as large as we could per OFCC guidelines as to what they would allow us to build within the scope of the contract. So we, we did take that into plan.
And just to clarify, the state would not permit any more square footage.
It did not, we had to accept an enrollment study, thank you, yeah, we, exactly. We had to accept an enrollment study that showed a declining enrollment because everyone in Northeast Ohio is declining. I am saying we are not growing, but we are not declining. So there's, as fast as they predicted, we're going, it's two, three, it's a negligible decline right now. So again, we're not growing, but we are staying consistent where we are. As a population, our students are declining, especially in Northeast Ohio. We're seeing a much larger decline than we do here. Traffic and infrastructure concern, how is it gonna work? What's gonna fit there? Safety and security of pods, I think when we use the word pods in our classrooms, the pods are kind of the four classrooms and the pod in the middle. Some of that was misconstrued for, well, a pod in another building looks like a modular classroom, even though we put eight classrooms attached to the building. Some people missed on that a little bit, so there was five answers that talked to that. Opposition to additional costs, again, the financial piece continues to come up again and again. And then somebody said, you know, I can live with it, but I really like the other solution better. So they kind of said, it makes sense and maybe you should do this, or do this after that, or do both. But my first preference would be the Lamute addition or option two. So feedback from the Lamute addition, again, really, really a mixed bag. One was a support for moving all fifth graders to Lamute. Having all the grade level in one, there were a lot of feedback that really thought that was a good idea, especially with some of our, man, I got something tickling there. Some of our families who really have had experience at Lamute, they said they love it. Space and flexibility in the future, the ability to have a centralized building to move, move up or make it a six, a six-eight building if we needed to down the road with the plan, or a five-seven building. That was their, positive feedback from the current families who were there. A lot of great things going on in Lamute. We were just there today watching the fifth grade and really the, just, just the things we did and Dr. Bassett's kind of worked with us to do to the building. It really is some positive things. Other concerns and oppositions, as we had when we moved Buckeye and Melridge families, we have concerns with fifth graders being with seventh graders when we moved the first couple groups up. Those concerns still exist, we still need to work through those concerns to make sure we have those open nights, those welcome parents that come ask questions, that sort of thing, to make sure that they feel, they feel comfortable and they feel heard. Traffic and infrastructure, so if it's not on Madison Avenue, we're gonna have traffic and infrastructure concerns on Auburn Road. They're both the same. And cost, how are you gonna pay for it? Long-term considerations came up as a feedback. A lot of people like the idea that it is the middle-level building and it provides a pivot if we needed a pivot and provides future flexibility for any plan that we might come up with in the long term. A lot of people also said this is a benefit to every single student who goes, who lives in the district. They all go through Lamute, they all come to the campus. It doesn't just impact one community and one school. There was general support for renovations for the building. When I say that, people say, yeah, why are you in there? Air-conditioned the whole thing, but why are you, this room too. Why are you in there? Why are you in there? Make some, make some adjustments, you know, kind of fix some of these. And then there were some who said, well, just like the other one, they said, I kind of like it, but I like the one better. This one is, well, it's the lesser of two evils. So they, they had some preference, but they also said, it's not ideal and I would prefer, there were some that said, it's not ideal, it's the lesser of evils and I would still prefer a new high school. I think that was one specifically that came up. So those were some of the feedbacks from that. So the other one we did at the end of everyone is what else do you have to tell us? Now is your chance, give us a chance, and people did not hold back. What do you want us to know? What's your, what additional feedbacks you have? Many respondents, we talked about space and infrastructure needs. They emphasize the need for additional space perceived to grow, to perceived growing enrollment. They see these houses coming in, they think logically we are going to grow and have a significant impact. We don't know that based on the birth studies and all that. We can only predict out for as many live births are there. So live birth studies look pretty similar, but we can't predict more than that. Obviously, if you're putting that many homes in slowly over time, you're gonna gain maybe some or stay similar. And again, we're not gonna lose to the rate that we were supposed to. So I think we're gonna stay consistent. There's a concern that current solutions, like the modular units at Buckeye and Melridge are inadequate and a more permanent solution is needed. So there was some of that that came there. And several comments reflected frustration with overcrowding and the impact it has on learning environments, particularly at Riverview and Buckeye. So they told us, yes, you need to do this. There, there is a need because these buildings are overcrowded. There was, additionally in the feedback and just the open column, there was a significant preference for option two. Option two, which involves expanding Lamute, is frequently mentioned and it was a preferred choice. It's seen as more feasible and beneficial long-term solution for accommodating growth. It is viewed favorably for providing a consistent environment for all fifth graders. So we've seen, we saw some of that too, all fifth graders should be in the same spot. If we move some of them up, go ahead and move the other two buildings to that as well. More of those, there are, like I said, there were three hundred and sixty, we took a lot of responses and kind of summed them up. Concerns about equity and fairness. So again, we're talking about equity, expressing equity and addressing needs across the district, particularly between the newer and the older schools. A sentiment that the older schools like Buckeye and Melridge are being neglected. We're not doing anything with them, we're focusing on both Lamute and Riverview in both these plans. Or not necessarily addressing some of the problems that we've had from previous, previous moves. Finances and long-term planning, again, comes up again. How are we gonna pay for it? Given the current economic climate, you know, what's, what's gonna happen with that? Urging us to be fiscally responsible, considering long-term needs and avoiding short-term fixes that could lead to additional costs regardless later. So being purposeful in our, in our moves forward and suggest that, again, previous planning, you know, again, when they get a chance, well, you should have built it bigger in the first place. That, that kind of came up again, you know, in, in an opportunity, that, that's fine. Other, other things that came up, a lot of community trust and engagement issues. Several people saying there's a lack of trust in the district's decision-making process. Some stemming to the idea that we built these buildings too small or that we're doing things behind closed doors or they don't have opportunities with past decisions as well, such as the sale of Haddon and Hill Road cited as, cited as examples that were in there. Why, why'd you give those up when you were gonna need them again? A call for better communication and more inclusive decision-making, particularly engaging the community for future development. They, it was clear by giving this opportunity, wasn't just a chance to take a survey, they watched the video and it was a time investment. They want the say, they want to kind of have some impact in moving forward into that. Concerns about student experience and safety. Safety concerns were raised about this is a fix for one building, what's gonna happen at Buckeye? That came up at a couple of different spaces. Yeah, it's great that you're building on the Riverview, but my kids are still in modular units at Buckeye. Yes, it's great that this is happening in Lamute, but again, who's gonna address my students at Buckeye? Respondents highly, highlight the importance of maintaining the age-appropriate environments for students and the needs for improvements in facilities like playground and again, air conditioning. But talk about if we're gonna put all fifth graders at Lamute, we need to expand the playground. And that was the plan as well, it's kind of let's see what they want. We put some things in that we knew that they wanted in our first discussions and get to say, hey, what would be nice as we continue on, on the path? So I think that's a good thing that we have that in our plan moving forward. A little bit on the impact of the immediate options and looking at kind of not only estimated costs, but then also, once you build it, you have to staff it, you have to run it and what that looks like. So kind of putting together some of the impact of these immediate options. And again, I went, the estimated construction cost, I worked with Cleveland Construction and the new construction person to kind of work through some of this. These are rough numbers, the construction cost for, and I picked concept four, the one that could, that doesn't take the soccer fields and goes directly off the side of the building. That's about five point nine million to build. It's, I used five hundred square foot for new construction and then three hundred and thirty to do the renovations that are required because you're going into the building and taking a classroom and making it a hallway and then adding ten additional classrooms. So you lose two, gain ten, which is eight in total. Those, those costs do not include furniture, encasement and that sort of thing. So we could include technology and some of the infrastructure for the technology, but they don't include the desks, the bookshelves, all of that that we need to do it. Option two for the cost to build based on the square footage, and I use concept two for that. That's the one that's off the back side of Lamute, going towards the back, towards the garden there. That's about four point seven five million based on the square footage that was drawn up by the architect. And I used five hundred square feet because that is all new in that way. And it does not, again, cost does not include furniture. The one when we really kind of sat down and thought about, well, okay, now we're putting these classrooms in, what does it cost? What's the annual recurring cost? What's the cost of the general fund? When you, when you add more classrooms and add more teachers, what does it look like? In option one, we would need one full, one full-time, FTE is a full-time employee, one full-time employee for new grade level classroom. We do have some, like in the music room, we would shift that one out. So really, even though we have six grades there, we would really only need three to have an additional fifth section at each grade, if that were needed. The one thing that's different about that is at Riverview, if we add more than one additional section, we The one thing that's different about that is at Riverview, if we add more than one additional section, we need to add three specials teachers to make sure that specials are equitable across the district. So we could, we've done it before and it's not popular when we've taken specials in a building and shortened the time that those students get in specials, just to get all of the sections in and all of the sections across. But we would need to add, add those specials teachers to make sure that we keep the same times to free up, to free that up along the way. When you look at it specifically, you could probably get away with a part-time specialist teacher in the labor market. Finding a part-time person is very, is going to be extremely challenging to do. And we would probably have more benefit if we got creative with how we scheduled that part-time person. Because I don't think anyone would come for a part-time, but we would probably put out for a part-time. The other thing, we added a K1 interventionist to work with first grade and kindergarten this year. We would need to keep that K1 interventionist and make them a full, make that a full-time position. It's currently sitting as a long-term stuff. At Lamuth, if we were to shift all the fifth grade to Lamuth, we would actually see reduction in our fifth grade classroom teachers. We wouldn't riff them. But we would need less teachers because you have more kids coming together so you can space them out. It would be anywhere from three to five, depending on how we built that schedule. Those, those teachers would be reassigned for the additional sections needed at Riverview or if we saw bubbles in other places. We would need an intervention specialist there. We would shift probably from one of the buildings that had a lower caseload, we would shift it up. And we would probably need to add a second unit teacher. We are close now. We probably need to add a unit teacher as well. We might need to add at least one more unit teacher to Lamuth to make sure that we cover. As you're adding the units, it could be a shift, it might be an add. It just depends on what those students' needs are and the grade levels that they're in. It's, it's a different look. So we would know a little bit more depending on what direction we were given with that. Other additional staff that don't include teaching staff? Either one, when you're adding that much square footage, the, the need to add additional night custodian to make sure that those hallways are clean and buildings are absolutely ready for students every morning is essential. As well as you're looking at larger buildings of between 800 and 900 students, we're probably going to have to add either another assistant principal or some sort of administrative support in the way. At Lamuth, because our fifth, sixth and seventh graders have those school counselors, we would need to add a school counselor to kind of pick up some of the caseload for all of the fifth grade. So that would be kind of an add for that. But that would also come from potentially one of the shifts of the FTE teachers. We would shift them around and that would, that would free up. So we would actually be on the hook for the extended days that we pay our counselors before and after school, which are 10. So that, just as a general cost for what an FTE of a full-time teacher would be next year, all in with benefits and everything like that. We're looking at between $84,000 or $103,000 to the district's general fund. That's salary, benefits, and I used VA plus zero through, all the way up through masters. So five years in a masters degree kind of has it. That's why the estimate is, is the range. The benefits cost is fixed, the life insurance cost is fixed, all of that, all their costs is fixed. So it's, it's a salary difference. So that's kind of where we are, you know, in adding that staff. Briefly, we're a touch over the long-term and the preference for long-term results. 57% of those surveyed, so a little bit more than half, had a preference for a new high school and converting Lamuth to a middle school. 16% of them said a significant expansion to Buckeye. 14% said option one, the new middle school. And then there was a 43 other, so really a rough, I think I put it on the next slide, but a larger percent of those who want other as well. So there's a lot, and other included, both other included, all kinds of different options. Expand the elementary. I want this and this. Do this with this. Some said none. Live within your means. All of those kind of came out. Because one thing about these long terms is they would require additional ask, those funds are not in the current five-year forecast. So they would require finding ways to generate those funds. Emerging themes from all of the survey and kind of especially the long-term ones. The last one is any, this is from the last question, any, anything you have about our facilities. The number one emerging thing that came up was community involvement and support, engagement, engage the community. They wanted more engagement, continue on the way. They appreciated the video, they appreciated the opportunity, but wanted more of the engagement and sketches. They, like I said, they mentioned those specifically because those were in the last levy issue that went up, the last bond issue. People asked for, what is it going to look like? Give me some ideas. So they kind of could see the ideas and see the concepts that we were thinking along the way. So I think that was a great thing. Also, the express, yeah, I love the ideas, but will it really be supported by, by the taxpayers? That was a big one that came up. So anything would require new funds. There is skepticism about passing a new levy emphasizing that future proposals clearly have to benefit the entire community. We have said that going into this whole plan. It cannot just be about our K-12 students. It needs to be about the Riverside community as a whole. And we need to provide benefits for them as we go through. Others, facility prioritization, talking about the comprehensive plan. What does it look like? Also, is there a community pool or gym? Emphasize the need for, what do those partnerships look like? Again, that's that community, community aspect, not just one school. Air conditioning alone was its own thing. Air conditioning at all of our buildings came up as a theme all around. With the except, you know, obviously the only buildings that have it are the two new ones and the whole building. We have pockets in the other ones. Equity and safety. Safety came up as a concern, again, as a theme throughout, especially again, the chances to mention the modular units at Buckeye and provide a safe learning environment. Equity across schools was the other one that came up, being that the conditions at our elementary schools are not the same. Thank you. Trust and transparency alone. There's a lot to that that kind of came up as a theme. Feedback highlights a lack of trust in the district's handling of funds and facility planning. There are calls for better communication, clear data and a more detailed planning to rebuild that trust. So how do we go and rebuild that trust? How are we transparent about what we do? Financial concerns. How the project will be funded, what we, with requests for more information regarding the financial planning, including potential OFCC funding and what impact that's going to have on the taxpayers. We've talked a lot about OFCC funds, but that came up again as to, well, when are we up? When's our turn? And we know that our portion isn't a lot, but how do we utilize those funds in part of this and where do those funds fit into our long-term budget planning down the road? I gotta be honest, we've got a lot of this about money. I'm just saying. Long-term results feedback. So support for athletics versus arts. We talked about what are the options. We talked about performing arts center. We talked about updated athletic fields. Those came out in the community groups, in the stakeholder feedback. Those kind of things came out. And, and a lot of them said, you got to balance. They're both important and they're both important to us. There's importance for our athletic teams and our athletic facilities and our modern athletic facilities, but there's also importance for our arts. Support our arts, support our performing arts center, support that. So be balanced and don't necessarily put all your eggs in one basket. So they caution to that. Suggestions for improvement. So talking about reciprocal agreements with other districts. So some people said, well, have you thought about reaching out to this community group or have you thought about doing that? And really kind of for alternate funding and additional funding and some sort of funds to help you with. They mentioned Willoughby and did you, did you reach out to look at what's happening in Willoughby or look at Fairport with the library and how they've kind of paired up and some of those different. People hear about those, those expla, so they talked about those in any type of plan too and not just putting all of the burden on the schools. But where can some of the other, the other fundings come from? A lot of themes on modernization and expanding, but being cautious. We can't just put all our eggs in one basket. Need to be cautious in our approach and to make sure that whatever we do can consist on because we know down the road, we're going to continue to need, need more. It costs a lot of money to run schools. There's operating and there's also it costs a lot of money to build schools. So finding that, finding that good mix between the two. So the last thing we did as a group, we came up to a consensus decision. And we came up to two of them, one on the immediate needs and one on the second, the, the facilities committee, which is a group of stakeholders, included not only internal, not only internal administrators, but some parents who were involved. Mrs. Brewster sat down as a board liaison to it. That consensus decision was add eight classrooms to Lamuth, move all fifth grade and redistrict where possible. And the reason why we came up with that consensus together, the general consensus among the group was that moving all fifth graders to Lamuth is seen as practical and an equitable solution that would benefit the entire district by addressing space constraints in elementary schools. Then providing consistent educational experiences for all students. Moving forward, concerns about financial responsibility, equity across schools and student safety must be addressed. So in doing that, we felt that this, to the consensus, that this kind of could have the most impact to that. The long-term recommendation is let's go back and continue to study this. It's not just, hey, take the vote and move. There's a lot to it. We need to strengthen our community engagement. We need to be transparent. Continue these meetings, continue to invite more stakeholders, especially now that, you know, we're looking at a high school. What does that look like? What does that mean? What's the, what's the consensus to continue to involve community in our decision-making process? Maintain transparency by holding additional forums or surveys. Even Mrs. Brewster at our meetings said, hey, let's go talk to Mellridge and Buckeye to see what they want. That's a great idea. Let's go talk to those parents as well. And we said, get, let's get into the community meetings and those PTO, PTA meetings and let be announced to that. So kind of having those, these are, where are we going? What's our, what's our, how do we build trust that we're not just doing this because this is, this is a community decision? Because ultimately, in this long term, we need the community behind it. We need them to support it. We need them to move, to move forward and we know that. So it does fit, fit our motto, one community, you know, pursuing greatness, getting better every day. That's really what we need to make this happen. So one of those things, that's, that's a big part of it in terms of our, in terms of our long terms. And that ends my portion. So I'm going to turn it over to the money guy to talk a little about how we fund it.
All right. So some of the immediate needs funding, so like for the different options that were under consideration. You know, just a reminder, the district must have cash in hand at the time it signs the construction contract. You know, for example, when we built Parkside and Riverview, we passed the levy, we issued bonds for $38.5 million because we had to have cash in hand before we could legally sign a construction document. For this, for the immediate needs, I would recommend we use our permanent improvement fund. So there's a permanent improvement levy that was passed in 2015. It's a continuous levy. And based on the auditor's estimate of tax levy, called Schedule A, they projected receive about $2.5 million per year from that levy based on a 94% collection rate. That's a very conservative collection rate. We typically are more around a 99% collection rates. We bring in a little more than 2.6 million a year into that, into that permanent improvement fund. We received some minimal growth from, from new construction. And I went through the permanent improvement fund in a lot of detail at our last board of education meeting on August 15th, where I did a special report and went through what we use that fund for. We use it for not just building improvements, you know, we oilers, but we also buy equipment, school buses, Chromebooks, IT infrastructure. A lot of stuff that we use that permanent improvement fund for on an annual basis. The current available cash balance in that fund is about 6.7 million as of yesterday. That's, that's a little bit higher than usual. We did set aside strategically some COVID stimulus funds that received about $3 million that we had transferred to the permanent improvement fund a while back. That's, that's in that cash balance. And anything we decide to do with, with these immediate needs is, you know, any funds to address that means less funds available to address other needs that were identified in the facility condition assistance we had by Bielowski. And also for, you know, take away from any additional items that we consider putting into the Riverside High School career tech addition. We got that $2.5 million grant and put on a 4,500 square foot addition here. And we were considering other improvements that we can incorporate in that project. But if we use the funds elsewhere, you know, that would take away from, from, from that opportunity in, in that space. A couple borrowing options. We do have basically two ways that we can borrow money against our permanent improvement fund. There's a borrowing thing called tax anticipation notes. We can borrow up to 50% of our future revenue stream for 10 years using that method. And then there's another one called certificates of participation. I'll have our municipal advisor come and explain that in more detail if we consider that, but we can go longer than 10 years with that. It's a type of borrowing that's subject to annual appropriation. So typically, typically results in a higher interest rate, a little bit higher cost to loan, but we can go beyond a 10-year, 10-year window. So on these two examples here, our municipal advisor gave us some examples. If we did like a four, $6 million tax anticipation over 10 years, the annual debt service is between $462,000 and $693,000 per year for 10 years using that route. We did something more, a 20-year, that would be, you know, $4 million, it would be $288,000 per year. If you did 6 million, it'd be more than $27,000. Kind of depends on what we ultimately decide and, you know, depending on what project we go with and if we want to incorporate other things into that. You know, we could have more discussions about the funding piece of that, but there's, there's options available for that. But, you know, keep in mind that anything that we do, any type of long-term borrowing, you know, those funds will be committed going forward and have less available funds for other things that may come along the way. So we have to be cautious not to commit too much to the project that we'd have issues in the future, funding other needs that come about.
Okay. And our anticipated amount of taxes we're getting from the revaluation of the properties and when would that arrive?
So the, I have to go back to the updated numbers. So we, when we did our five-year forecast in May, we projected a 30% valuation increase across the district. I know certain neighbors that are higher and lower than that, so we don't really know exactly what the true overall amount is. We were projecting that it would generate about, when it's fully in, it's 3.6 million a year. That would go to the general fund mostly. Because the permanent improvement fund, that levy, as the valuations go up, the tax rate is going to drop on the permanent improvement levy. And that levy will generate additional funds from a valuation increase. It's more in the general fund on our inside millage and also that the 20 mil floor that we'll be reaching with the reappraisal. One of the things to note is the, the school district operates on a fiscal year basis, July 1 through June 30th, but property taxes go on a calendar year basis. And so when we, the first year of the reappraisal, which would be, you know, behind your tax bills going forward in next calendar year, we're only going to see about a 1.6 to 1.8 million dollar increase in our general fund that year. And then the following fiscal year, we realize the full amount based on the timing and difference of calendar years and fiscal years. I will note that, you know, we did see for our operating fund, our health insurance increase this year is 22%, which is the largest I've seen in my career. It's, and so that's a substantial cost because salary and benefits are our two largest budget items. And the benefits, health insurance is the largest piece. And so that's already projected to be about a 1 point, I would say $1.6 million increase to our general fund expenditures, just based on the health insurance increase going into effect in June.
Gary, one clarification, right? Just so everyone understands, I know you rolled through it, but the tax revaluation money starts to get billed out at the middle of next year.
It, it would start in January.
Yeah, but I mean, that's when you generally would get it by. I mean, because they start paying, but by the time we get the money, it's going to be partway to the middle of the year.
We would get it like around March.
Yeah, March 8th.
I figured, you know, until we know exactly what we're doing, there's, there's still a lot more discussion to have on the financing piece and.
Okay. And then who decides about where that money goes? You said operating, but we have a lot of facility needs and some of that money could be designated to make improvements in the district.
Each levy is set to where, so our current expense levies inside millage, we have a substitute levy. Those all go into general fund O1. The permanent improvement fund levy goes into fund 33 and then the, the debt retirement levy, the bond, the bond issue, which is now the debt levy to pay for Parkside and Riverview debt service, that goes in O2. So those levy funds have to go into those funds. It comes through from the, from the county auditor's settlement sheet and we deposit into the appropriate funds. The board can choose to transfer money from the, from the general fund to a PI fund or capital projects fund to fund those things. But that would, you know, obviously affect our long-term forecasting.
Yeah. That we have a lot of needs. Yeah. Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Gary, once the five-year forecast comes out, we will hear that presentation in November, correct, at the November board meeting?
We typically, we have to file the five-year forecast in November with the Department of Education. So we'll go over that in the November board meeting and file at the end of the month. And then we do an update in May of each year as well.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. It's just a board question.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Good. Who's my report?
Thank you. All right. That brings us to old business. Ms. Grazia, I think you had a couple laid up to.
I think, I think I had old business. I had, I would like to discuss again, the proposal to raise the security personnel pay, but I think that's on our agenda. So I think that old business is already being handled as an agenda item. Old business, I'd like to review at some point, if it's not today, at a future meeting, the additional costs that were associated with the bus undercoating project. To include a cost comparison of both company proposals that would encompass additional district wages, payroll taxes, overtime and any other costs associated. So we can compare what we did versus what we could have done had we had some adequate time to prepare for that discussion. I don't know if you have anything for that today. I know I put that out there, but.
I have some information prepared. I can, I can share if you'd like, just a quick moment. The, the cost of the undercoating as far as from the vendor between the two companies that were under consideration were essentially the same. The, you know, as the board moved forward with the armor linings, undercoating out in Pennsylvania. With the transportation department on Saturday, the 7th and Saturday, the 21st, drove 20 buses each, each of those days to, to armor linings for the undercoating. buses each, each of those days to, to armor linings for the undercoating. And the estimated cost from that, from the, from Saturday, the 7th, the payroll and benefit cost of that day was just over $4,000 for the personnel piece. I would anticipate the 21st was about the same. It's still, the pay period ends on September 30th. We haven't gotten those timesheets yet. Let's see what those hours are. But I would assume it'd be similar to what they were last time. We also estimated the, the fuel costs, about $1,700 or so is a rough estimate based on 10 miles a gallon for each bus. And it's about 144-mile round trip from what we calculated. And then there's a little bit of costs for meal reimbursement for lunches. It was out-of-state travel, so they were entitled to meal reimbursement. So I think it was all in, you know, the, the undercoating cost was $12,000 for those, for those buses. And I think about, it was just over, it'd be about just over $10,000 in personnel benefits and fuel for the, for transporting out there.
And, and just as a reminder, we did not have any opportunity to review that information prior to because that was added to our agenda at the last minute. The other old business piece that I have is I'd like to propose a policy committee meeting, but I think that should probably wait until we get our policy updates. We have some information that we need to update into the board handbook, which includes the sections on the committee definitions and outlines of the scope of work by each committee, among other duties. I have that information that we compiled earlier this year. And so we should probably start working on that. But I don't know when those Neil law updates will arrive, so.
They, they keep saying Neil is coming. And so we could, we could schedule a separate one if you would prefer to do that.
I mean, maybe we should do that just to start getting rolling on the board handbook, at least, because then maybe we can have all that done at the same time. I'm open to that. We don't, I mean, we don't have to schedule that meeting.
We could send, I'll send some, we'll send some dates out.
That'd be great.
For that, probably next week, to be honest.
Okay.
Because I know that chucks out this week. So it's a central part of that.
There was no other old business sent via the email, so I don't know if there's any other old business topics. All right. That brings us to new business. Again, Ms. Grassi, you had a new business item?
I did. I just wanted to make sure that we, as board members, have adequate time to prepare for the board meetings, which would ensure that all board members have the information you think you need in order to make informed decisions at all board meetings so that agenda items can be effectively voted on in a timely manner, which, which I guess entails that whole 48-hour notice prior to and having things in the agenda and not adding things at the table that we don't have an opportunity to discuss. I don't know if anybody has anything to add to that, so.
All right. Again, no other new business items were sent via email. So is there any other new business at the table? All right. That brings us to our business, Board of Education Committee and Liaison Report Updates. First one is the Superintendent's Business Advisory Committee. We did have a meeting on September 5th. We focused on the portrait of a Riverside beaver, which is over there on the banner. Everyone can see that. And how now do we start to build that in? So that was, some of the work came from what the Business Advisory Council has done and put out. And now there's more discussion about how do we bake that into our K through 12 classrooms and making sure that our goals and the classrooms help us get there. I think Mrs. Mullen did a great job of helping us kind of highlight that, how you're using it. So thank you. We also discussed a capstone project that focuses on the connection with the portrait. So there'll be a lot more work, we'll do more work with that throughout the year with the Business Advisory Council and make sure that we're thinking about how we do that. There was a lot of discussion about how do we start to expand or provide guidance on careers. So we're doing a lot of work, you know, career-wise, trying to make sure there's electives for our students, things like that. Now, how do we expand that? You know, every kid's kind of out there searching for what am I going to do? And, and how do we make sure that they have the opportunity to kind of explore what our opportunities are out there? And there was a lot of discussion, for instance, a lot of us, like the teachers, you know, we know, they know teaching, right? You know, so if a kid comes up and talks about engineering, and I think Dr. Ruttino mentioned this, like, you know, somebody has a discussion about engineering where he doesn't know all the pieces and parts of engineering, right? So we need to find those people that can help us and help our students figure out, how can we explore those areas and those opportunities? So that was another big discussion. And that really will help us kind of focus on the work that we're doing throughout the year with the Business Advisory Council. Anything else you would add from that?
No, our next meeting is next Thursday.
And our next meeting is next Thursday. Great. Thank you. I lost my agenda.
Who is involved in the business advisory, Kenny?
Well, it's.
Just for the benefit of everyone.
Mr. Roberts is involved in the Business Advisory Council, so. And there's some people here. But it's really business people throughout the community. Some are entrepreneurs, some are, you know, from different business areas, just bringing kind of their expertise, people that are dealing, we need this township in there.
Yeah, they're not, they're just community leaders as well.
Yeah. Okay. So a big mix of business people throughout the community. All right. Great. Thank you. That brings us to Curriculum and Programming Committee and Facilities Liaison, Ms. Brewster.
Okay. The Curriculum Programs Committee held their meeting on September 23rd. And Dr. Melissa Malakar, our curriculum director, shared that the Effective Leadership Academy at Lamuth started on September 23rd for sixth graders, and it will be held on October 21st for eighth graders. The seventh grade participates in this program in the spring because it's closer to their preparation for eighth grade. So I think I typo'd here, is seventh grade? No, seven, eight. Wait, six. When is fifth grade? Can you clarify?
Fifth grade is.
Fifth grade doesn't do it. That's right. Okay. Sounds good. All right. So this is a highly successful program. Mr. Basic, I don't know if you wanted to say a word about it, but basically it's well-received by the students and, and really helps.
It's a program to help our students when they're transitioning from the elementary to the middle school level. They focus a lot on leadership skills. We focus on building confidence and helping them through that kind of challenging transition to the middle school, but then scaling that up to the seventh grade and going into the eighth grade as well as they make a quick transition to the high school.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Then Aaron's Law. It's a new state requirement for kindergarten through grade 12. And it covers sexual abuse, abusers, helping students or children identify ways that they can report a concern. A link will be sent to all parents who have the right to opt their child out of this instruction. I think there's a way to review the, what's taught. And it's the intent of our district to engage an outside agency who would be, who is trained to be able to provide this instruction. But typically, the teacher is in the room with the instructor when that's happening. Okay? And then the new K-2 reading program, Wit and Wisdom, is proceeding and will be reviewed by the staff at their, on November in service on how things are going. I think you stated that there was some need for additional planning time because it's pretty comprehensive. Then there have been questions regarding the teaching of cursive handwriting. Is it still taught? It is taught in the second grade in our district. And I just expressed some continuing instruction, perhaps into third grade, because sometimes second graders, especially at the beginning of the year, it's hard for them to connect letters and get fluid with it. And typically, I know in other districts, they, they try to continue some review and continuation of that. So it's good to know that, you know, the state does require it. And they, they feel that, you know, between grades three and five, they should be able to, you know, legibly write in cursive. But we also have to be concerned that our students also know how to read cursive. And sometimes that can be an issue. So we just wanted to make sure we covered that base. The new CTE, which is the Career Technical Education Grant, that was $2.5 million. It had its first design meeting, and the Buildings and Grounds Committee will be continuing to follow up with that effort. The addition will be constructed on the back side of Riverside near the picnic tables where the cafeteria is. Okay. So, and the timeline for that, there is.
We're set to be in the building by spring of '26. That's as soon as Gary would let me say I could get in there.
What was the date?
In the spring of '26. So hopefully by January of '26, second semester of the next school year, we'll be getting in.
January's not spring, just a different.
Well, it's the spring semester. I'm just saying.
Okay.
Consider it the spring semester.
All right.
It's January. Gary said January.
Okay. Thank you. And then on October 8th, Dr. Ruttino and Dr. Malakar will provide an in-depth overview of the recent release, recently released state report card. And it'll be at 6 o'clock in this room, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
In addition, each school, as well as the superintendent, will share what each building is doing to improve academic performance at upcoming board meetings. And you did an excellent job, Mrs. Mullen. So thank you for sharing. And Mrs. Lanning, over there, she's our Director of Student Services. And she shared that there was a new sensory room at Buckeye in the old clinic recently. There were two English learners' parent information nights that were very well attended. We had interpreters on hand, and they were able to go through all the forms and other things that are required coming into school. And so thank you for doing that. And so it worked out really well. And then Dr. Lanning also, or excuse me, Mrs. Lanning also shared news about the preschools, the two sections at Buckeye and the two at Melridge. There are AM and PM classes for identified students and some typical students. And there's also an autism multiple disability class at Buckeye, correct? And I see that the Director of Preschool has arrived, Mrs. Jen Westbro.
Westbro.
Yeah. She's here now. And she serves between the two schools, Buckeye and Melridge. So thank you. And then could you just give us a quick definition so the audience understands MTSS, what that means?
Multi-tiered Systems of Support. And it is a tiered approach to providing intervention to our students that are at risk or not where we would like them to be in terms of grade levels.
Right.
And it is something that we are promoting district-wide. And Mrs. Mullen also spoke about it at Buckeye within the first month of school so far.
Right.
I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that. That's in the strategic plan.
It is. Yes, thank you.
Yes. Okay. But it's really good because it's a safety net. When they do the testing or, you know, those conversations are taking place, you're assigning interventions to try to address those specific areas. So thank you. But sometimes that alphabet soup, you know, the initials don't always get understood. All right. Our next meeting is going to be October 16th at 7:30 a.m. We meet early. All right. And then as far as the Facilities Liaison, Dr. Ruttino usually gives that report, which he did tonight. I have served on that committee. Okay?
Thank you. Yes. Bring us to Buildings, Grounds, Operations Committee and Alumni Association, Mr. Fischel.
So in the alumni meeting, there was a report of the All 80s reunion, which was reported as a success. There was an all-class hotluck that was reported as a success, although there were only 33 attendees. Almost every attendee did do a walk through the building and, and take a look at their old classrooms and, and the building. And then we have, the Hall of Fame dinner is October 26th, and all are invited. And it's $45 a person. And it will be 5:30 p.m. is the reception, cash bar. 6:30 p.m. will be dinner. And 7:30 p.m. will be the induction ceremony. And the reservation deadline is October 15th. So there could be a proper headcount, headcount for the food. And that is the alumni. On the Buildings and Grounds, there was a Melridge modular water issue. Roughly 75 square feet of wall and ceiling were removed, along with the insulation. The structure was inspected, cleaned, and sanitized. And, you know, when there's water, there's mold that was taken care of that was remediated. Everything's been restored. The maintenance was done to seal around the windows, secure loose siding, and inspect the roof for holes, and did some sealing on the roof. The Mel, a Mel, another Melridge modular, I don't know, Mr. Alessic, is it the same roof that, there's a roof installation quote?
Yes.
Same roof? Okay. So that's in process. We received prices for fencing to fence around the Parkside and Riverview retention ponds and around the Lamuth varsity softball field. There was an underground washout happening underneath the visitors' bleacher. Hallmark excavating, providing a time and material proposal for repair. That's a go. That will be probably already done?
No, it's in process.
In process. At Buckeye, there was a water main break just outside the boiler room and under the concrete walk and asphalt drive. Repair was completed by ABV excavating. A four-foot section of pipe was removed and replaced. So that's done. Bypass water line on the main supply for the high school sprung a leak Friday, September 13th. Schaefer Plumbing did a temporary repair. A complete replacement of the bypass line and valves will take place within the month. Schaefer Plumbing will contact Lake County for permits and do what they need to do. The Lamuth gym floor is complete and functioning well.
Yes.
And there was a new center curtain that is a few weeks out for installation, so that'll be coming. And the Lumen family benches donation arrived, and the benches were put together by maintenance and probably installed?
There is.
Yes.
Installed and done. A parent email was received about broken playground equipment at Riverview, and the repair was made. Damage was discovered at the end of the school year, and parts were ordered in June. Parts arrived the second week of the school. We can have later the installer replace the broken piece with new. So that's done. We have another heat exchanger issue with an RBI boiler at Parkside. Had a meeting with Gardner, Mr. Alessic did, and that's a problem and is in process. Do you have an update on that?
What's going to happen is the district is going to have to replace it.
So at our own expense?
There's no, it's our expense. Warranties are expired. And additionally, we spoke about this a year and a half ago about the other one that went out. And RBI is not responsive to any requests or threats.
Now, is RBI the company that's in Canada?
That is correct. Their mother, their mother business is in Canada, and they have a silo office in Connecticut.
So just a note, Building and Construction, what happened was, I don't know how it happened, but I can tell you why it happened. It happened because we didn't have an owner's rep in place when Parkside and Riverview were built. And unfortunately, we got sourced outside of the United States in Canada. And the last time we had a boiler issue, it was at our expense to take it apart, ship the part up there for them to tell us, it's not our problem, it's your problem. Now we're on our own with things that are breaking. So it's going to be our expense to replace it.
Did this happen, it happened at Parkside and then, or where did, this is the second one?
Was it just one school or both schools?
We replaced one at Riverview. Now we have one at Parkside.
Okay. Both new schools.
So anyway, we want to prevent that sort of thing in the future. We had a replacement of the motherboard for the alarms at Riverside and John R., the fieldhouse, Buckeye, Melridge, Lamuth. The current motherboards and programming abilities were no, no longer supported. And then also, the new motherboard, as I understand it, will be compatible with the Compass FOBs that people have.
The programming system for the motherboards will allow us to clean out our system and start fresh. The targeted date is going to be winter break. We're currently looking into whether or not we can attach our badges to the Compass system to allow for easier egress into the building if you have the clearance.
And so it's a comprehensive system in as much as whoever has an access unit, whatever it may be, FOB or otherwise, there are certain areas that people can get into and certain areas they can't. So it's a much better security system, and that's moving forward. Buckeye had a large Buckeye had a large bee issue, numerous hives and nests were removed, and that's done. There were door proposals for replacement for the welding lab, south end of John R. and the office house, and we approved a go-ahead and replaced the doors. They were all necessary and needed to function properly. One of them was, the house door was a safety issue because the door was opening the wrong way, so that'll be taken care of. The stadium track project is now complete, and what needed to be completed was needed to paint the lanes. And as I understand it, there are very few companies available to do that, so we are on a list, and it's now completed. And the previous lanes, there was one that wasn't quite right, such that if there had been a record, it would have been taken away because we weren't quite right on one of the lanes, okay? That's been remedied, and we're in good shape now. So, good there. Additional funding for the CTE project to extend into the high school for improvements and upgrades in conjunction with the $2.5 million grant that Ms. Malakar, hello, Ms. Malakar, had secured from the state. Thank you so much. So, anyway, we discussed that, and that'll be an ongoing discussion, although the plans are going to need to be, start to be developed, and we're going to start to have to know what we're going to want to do as far as expanding into the building. And one of the ideas is, if you're putting air conditioning there, and it makes sense where you could go another 20, 30, 40, 50 feet into the building, we would want to do that instead of truncating it. So, just things like that are going to come up, and we will probably be appropriating some extra money to accommodate the necessary items in that regard. There was upgraded signage for the campus and Lamuth. Well, we're looking to do upgraded signage for campus and Lamuth, and for the campus, and this is more directional signs, so that people know where to go. Right now, people don't always know where to go, there is some confusion, and so, we're looking at spending about $10,000 for signs, so that people know where to go. And we have a lot of activities and a lot of people that are not from this district attend, so that'll be helpful, and we approve that. We also had very good feedback from the bathrooms that were done, and so now, we are looking at doing more bathrooms, and Mr. Alessic said the best time to do that. He's moving on that, but the best time to execute that would be spring break, so more bathrooms will be done. Okay. Which brings us to the last item, which is, in that Buildings and Grounds meeting, I passed out the rendering from TDA, the architect, for the eight classroom addition at Riverview. And so, passed it out to Ms. Grassi, and Superintendent Rotino, and Mr. Platko, and we looked at that, and what I was saying is a continuation of the conversations as a board that we had had previously, which is, we have immediate needs, and Riverview is one of those immediate needs. So, during that meeting, the Buildings and Grounds meeting, it was brought up, and I passed out the diagram to show everyone the possibility of what would be done. And so, just want to make everyone aware that in that meeting, Ms. Grassi being the second board meeting, she did see the rendering for the addition. So, that's what I have for Buildings and Grounds.
And I would just like to add, as the second member, that while we saw those plans, we had really no conversation about them. We haven't discussed how much of the PI funds we had agreed in the meeting, that we didn't have any idea of how much of the PI funds that we will be allocating to the project that we have currently underway at the high school. And other than having those plans passed out, we didn't have conversation at that Buildings and Grounds meeting about what options we should pursue, simply because the facility plan had not been completed yet, and we were going to allow the district to move forward with that first. So, I will agree, I saw those plans, but we really didn't have conversation about that.
Yeah, I think there was some information put out that this was never discussed and never seen prior to this being put on.
It has not been discussed. So, at the Buildings and Grounds meeting, it was really not discussed.
Yeah, so, just as a note, being the Chair of that committee, I was completely open for dialogue and questions, and there were no questions.
Great, so our next agenda item is our Policy Committee and Legislative Liaison, Mrs. Grassi.
I don't have anything at this time, other than we'll determine the times of course maybe in the future.
Right. That brings us to our Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. A couple of things going on this week. First of all, as Fischel mentioned, the track renovations are complete. They did come in and paint. They chose to paint. We, fortunate, they were putting, they put the painting off till after the monsoon that we had, came in and painted the track lanes, and it looks great as well. So, really excited that that project was done, completed, and now is legitimate.
So, what was your best time around the track?
Twelve.
It looks good.
It's fantastic. Again, someone mentioned the Lamuth gym floor being completed and up-to-date with the new basketball hoops, new floor. It looks amazing in there. It's bright, it's painted, we did it right. The floor is actually, it's kind of squishy when you step on it. We had our first home volleyball game on Monday. I'm not sure how we did it, I forgot to ask. We won, so we're undefeated on it. So, we got that. And so, now we're going into basketball season, so volleyball, we've got a whole year, so we're undefeated, we're going to protect home turf. We are waiting for the curtain to come in, that's on back order, but we did replace the curtain as well. That will come in soon too. And the basketball hoops are super cool. They do have a, no longer even balancing a ladder and a four-by-four, a two-by-four to kind of swing them over, they're generated on a more safe system to not only raise and lower them, but then also to slide them out of the way when needed.
Okay, and I did get to see it today. It's so impressive, the painting of the ceiling and the walls, it just brightened the whole room, but there was also some tuck pointing, yeah, and that.
So, we had an opportunity to take care of one of the critical needs in the Bielski reports, before we did anything to that, we addressed those as well. And so, it was a good plan overall, well-executed. We had our first DLT meeting on September 25th, that was actually yesterday, wasn't it?
A hundred years ago!
It was a great meeting. We worked together on the Portrait of Riverside Beaver, kind of looking at, we did a design challenge with it to familiar all members, and the DLT is the District Leadership Team, and it's made up of district administrators and teachers at all of our various buildings, as well as some central office members. We did a design challenge with the Portrait of Riverside Beaver. We will be showing that to our business advisories, so those on the business advisories, stay tuned, it's really awesome, really excited about that. And we also worked on looking at the competencies and what the competencies look like in the Portrait of Beaver. How do you know we're doing it? What are we teaching them? What does that look like? And we took some time to analyze the results of the state report card, making sure that we all understand what it's saying, because that's the first thing to say, what does the report card mean? What do these stars mean? How do we prove? And that guy said, this is, they still, we are doing a comprehensive report card breakdown, which will be super exciting. If you can't sleep, come on and see it, it'll be great. So, we're going to do that, kind of where we are. We are pleased with our report card results, we are moving up and moving forward incrementally. We have some areas of growth, but we're kind of seeing kind of where we're at with that. And then, we worked in our committees, and our committees did so much work last year, really happy with the work that comes out of those committees and how they've taken into and embraced the leadership role. The committees assigned things, or came up with things last year with allowing our teachers to work over the summer maintenance, which allowed our beautification of our buildings. That came out of committees, some of the plans in our MTSS strategies and the interventions. To find those and come up with a comprehensive, although it takes a lot of work, our committees are doing that work, and they're doing a really great job. Technology Committee is working to make sure we're in line with some of these new ridiculous, I mean, mandates that are coming from the state, that really do kind of, were passed, but how do we, how do we work through to make sure we're staying, sticking with those and in line with those, and also, what does a future, what does a future-ready classroom look like? So, that's kind of where our technology committee is growing and leading from. And then, we're also looking at our graduation experience and those sorts of things. So, we've got some great committee work that's happening in those. Visitor Aware System, as you walk into any Riverside building, and they'll soon be in the vestibules, we have this visitor-aware system that we are, it's a new system. We used to use Raptor Visitor Aware, it's a little more comprehensive. It was recommended by Mr. Renwick, who's our Technology Director. Visitor Aware, you can pre-register, which you couldn't do with our Raptor system, so if you're coming in to volunteer or to do anything, you can go to our website and pre-register for admittance, which makes getting into the buildings a lot easier. You will see an iPad and iPad stand as you walk in, that's where the system is. It does use facial recognition to make sure who you say you are is who you are, and it checks that to your driver's license ID against national databases before we let them into the building. So, they come into the vestibule, we'll run the visitor-aware, and if everything checks out, we then allow them into the building, print out a badge for them to identify them as a visitor to the building. And again, the pre-registration link is on our website. And Quality Profile, we released our Quality Profile, as we do every year. Mr. Caravan works on that. The Quality Profile is comprehensive and community-oriented companion piece to the state report card. So, it talks about what are we doing, what coursework we offer, some of the great things we're really proud of, a number of AP courses, our athletics and academics, some of the great things we do that are unique to Riverside, and there's always a picture of the new plows that we paint, that's such a cool thing. And so, all of those things, it helps evaluate the effectiveness of the school district beyond just standardized test scores and those kind of data that we push to the state. So, it's a great companion piece to say, yes, here's our academic or standardized test score achievement, and here's what else we do, because education is more than just a score. We are going to mail it to all residents, so stay tuned, and it's coming to your mailbox shortly. Next week is Homecoming, we are really excited for that. The parade is Thursday, the 3rd, at 6:30. They'll be walking down Riverside Drive. Parade begins at the History Center and proceeds in front of RHS into the driveway near this Down JK Way. Community members are encouraged to line up on the grass alongside 84, watch and enjoy the parade, those with young ones, I think they throw candy, so be ready for candy to kind of catch. It's a great opportunity to, you know, for us to sugar up your kids and send them home. And then, we will do a pep rally inside following the parade. The Homecoming game is next Friday, and the dance is Saturday, and we're really excited to have that, it's a great event. This year's safety team, we got a picture of all of them together. We appreciate all of our deputies in school security and school resource officers for keeping our students and staff safe. We're thankful for all the partnership we're able to have with the Lake County Sheriff's Office to make sure that it happens and to make sure that they pick not just anyone, but the right person with certain traits, so that they are really more than just a person in uniform in the building, but they truly interact with the kids. When you go over during recess at any of our buildings, you'll see the officers a lot of times actually playing Gaga ball with the kids, or playing, you know, doing, kind of watching them on the playground, that sort of thing, interacting, getting to know the kids in a really positive way. So, it's an awesome program that we have, and it's one that we're proud of. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And that brings us to the Treasurers' Report and Committee Update, so Finance Audit Personnel Committee and Booster Organization Liaison, Mr. Kinni.
We had our meeting held on September 23rd. Personnel Updates was really just about typical personnel turnover and postings for newer replacement positions is ongoing. Several medical maternity leaves will occur in the coming months, and arrangements will be made to cover for these absences. A new tech support specialist currently working in the district will move to a full-time position. Security Rate Increase, I asked the administration for some information, they provided that, and this was some of the information they supplied for the security rates in other communities. Painesville, which has, Painesville Police and the Lake County Sheriff's Office covering their extracurricular activities, currently pay $45 per hour through 2025. Menter utilizes Menter, Menter on the Lake Police and the Lake County Sheriff's Office, and they will be at $50 per hour in 2025. Willoughby Eastlake is Willoughby, Eastlake, and Willowick Police, they're currently at $42 per hour. Kirtland is at $135 per event. Perry has Perry Police and Lake County Sheriff's Office at $45 per hour. Wickliffe, they utilize the Wickliffe Police, and their rate per event is $160 at a four-hour minimum, or $40 per hour. Fairport Harbor, they have the Fairport Harbor Police and paramedics, they're paid $75 per event. Our 2022 agreement with the Lake County Sheriff's Office states that the hourly rate for part-time SOs shall be $35, which may be adjusted from time to time by mutual agreement of the parties. It was previously raised 14.3% to $40 per hour. Their asking rate was $45 per hour, which would have constituted a 12.5% increase. Less than 24 hours after our meeting denying the increase due to insufficient supporting data and no other reason, the district received the following letter. This came from the person who schedules, the deputies. Over the past year, the Lake County Sheriff's Office has received an influx in off-duty side jobs within our townships, as well as requests from Lake Metro Parks Rangers, Menter Police, and Painesville Police. On a weekly basis, I receive multiple requests from Menter to fill their after-school details, elementary school security, events centers, and traffic details. As of August 1st, 2024, the Menter Police Department raised their rates to $50 for any security detail. Similar requests are also received from Painesville Police to work security and traffic details in which their rate is $45 for security events. I have proposed to our Sheriff's Office Administration that come January 1st, 2025, that all security details will be $50, and if scheduled with less than 24-hour notice, it will be $60. Unfortunately, these deputies are coming in on their off-time and staying after shift to accommodate these details, and it's only reasonable that they be compensated appropriately. It goes without saying that our deputies are taking many of these Menter and Painesville details due to the increase in pay, respectively submitted. So, since the Lake County Sheriff's Office is our sole provider of security services, we will have to pay the non-mutually agreed-upon rate of $50 per hour, a 25% increase from the previous rate, and a 43% increase from 2022. The Ohio Department of Development is offering an advanced energy grant. It's only $2.5 million, and that grant is available statewide and for energy upgrades. It requires 100% M.A.S. With this amount is small when considered competition is front throughout the state. The district will see if anything can be done, perhaps upgrading lighting at one of our schools. The booster organizations, the PTA and PTO organizations are actively seeking members and volunteers for various activities and fundraisers planned for the school year. Funds raised benefit their schools and teaching staff. Check each school website for scheduled activities, meeting dates, and volunteer opportunities. Our next meeting will be held October 16th.
Thank you. Mr. Platko, Treasurer Update?
As usual, we'll go through our monthly, quickly through our monthly financial reports. Just as a reminder, our monthly financial reports are available in Wordbox and also on the Treasurer page on our website, the link is listed there on the slides. At the end of August, our total cash balance for all funds were about $49.8 million. Typically, August is our highest cash balance month, based on when the property tax settlements come in, that cash balance will decline until we receive our next property tax payments in February, March of next year. The general fund balance is at $32.6 million. The permanent improvement fund is actually at $8.2 million, that number's a little different than presented earlier. Earlier, I presented the unencumbered available balance as of yesterday, but the unencumbered available balance as of August 31st was just a little over $6.7 million. We have $1.5 already committed to other projects that are throughout the district. Some of the general fund statistics, the revenue for August, it's a high month because we see our property tax settlement, total revenue just shy of $7.3 million. That includes $623,000 in unrestricted state foundation payments, that's our state funding in Ohio, also includes just shy of $4.8 million in general property taxes, and just shy of $1.5 million in public utility tangent tax. Our interest revenue for August was $129,908. We have a, the interest rate in August 31st was 5.43% at Star Ohio. Our Red Tree Investment account's at $4.01. Our Red Tree Investment account is at 4.01% for an overall yield of 4.96% interest rate that we're getting on our funds. You may have seen that the Fed lowered rates by half a percentage point in recent weeks. The Star Ohio rate typically drops as that happens, so I think it's at 5.11% as of the other day, and they'll probably go down a little lower more time. Expenditures for August was 4.7 million. Also this month, it's a big month for what's called our permanent appropriations. That's essentially our annual budget. Basically, each fiscal year, on or before October 1st, we had to approve a permanent appropriation measure. Typically, as a board, we approve what's called temporary appropriations in June. That's effective July 1st. That gets, allows us to spend going into this fiscal year until we adopt those permanent appropriations, and that gets sent to the county auditor once, once that's approved. The appropriations are, we do this at what's called the legal level of control at the fund level, so basically the Board of Education approves the total budget amount per fund, and we can revise that throughout the year if we need to. There is the option to go to more deeper levels, called Fund Function Object Level or Fund Function Level, and basically what that means is we require more board approvals throughout the year. For example, if the high school wanted to spend more on their instructional supplies, they moved their budget from office supplies to structural supplies that require board action, so we don't go down to that detail. We do that at the fund level. Since the board's already approving all personal items and all purchases over $15,000, it allows a little more flexibility. There's 24 active funds in the district that we track that are all designated for different purposes, but within those funds, we have what's called special cost centers, so there's separate fund balances that we track. For example, we took over the scholarship funds from the foundations, so there's about 10 or 11 scholarship funds. We track 10 or 11 different cash balances within that fund. So in total, of all of our funds, we're actually tracking 161 different cash balances throughout the year. We have 476 active revenue accounts that we budget for, and then there's 3,231 active budget accounts. Most of that's in salary benefits, but also there's supplies and purchase services pick up some of that as well. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of budget activity goes on within the office that's a lot more detail. What our permanent appropriations look like, this is a total of our local funds. If I flip the slide here. General funds, obviously the largest, that's our operating fund. Our appropriation for fiscal year 2025 is $55.3 million. That makes up about 72% of our total budget of all funds. I'll just highlight some of the larger numbers here. We have Fund 002, Bond Retirement Fund, that's repay the debt service for the construction of Parkside and Riverview. We have 006 Food Service Fund, that's our food service, our cafeteria operations at $2.4 million per year. Fund 030 is the joint financing district levy, that's that joint levy between Madison, Painesville, Perry and Riverside. We collect about $3.2 million annually. We have appropriate $3.9 million in that fund for the year. And in the permanent improvement fund, we currently appropriate $5,750,000 in that fund, which we can adjust as, as needed. One of the things I mentioned about school districts is we all use the same fund numbers. So if you go look at Menter's financials or Willoughby Eastlake's, Fund 001 is going to be general fund, Fund 006 is going to be food service. There's a lot of consistency among school districts in the state of Ohio, which makes, you can do more analysis among other school districts that they look about the same. Going into, on this slide here shows our appropriations for our state grants and federal grants. Right now, Fund 499 miscellaneous state grants is just over $2.5 million. That's the career tech grant and also a safety grant that's out through Attorney General's Office, and then we have about $1.8 million appropriated for our federal grant funds for a total appropriation measure of $76 million, which is on tonight's agenda report.
Okay, and the latch key is self-supported, correct? And it's located at every building?
Elementary.
Yeah, I meant elementary, sorry. Yeah, so every elementary has one?
Yes.
Okay.
And that concludes my report.
Carrie, the general, when we do the five-year forecast, it's only on the general fund?
The, our five-year forecast includes the general fund 001 and the joint financing district fund 030. Most districts is just Fund 001, but the joint financing district's a little bit unique, and we include that on our forecast and choose for future salaries.
Thank you. Great, that brings us to public participation. The Riverside Local School District Student Services Office invites the public to provide input into the district's use of federal funds towards the education of students with disabilities. These funds are known as Individuals with Disabilities Education Act funds. The public can provide input via the public portion of the Board of Education meeting or contact the Student Services Office at 440-352-0668. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to speak from the podium, identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes. Just to remind everybody, again, comments will be limited to three minutes for everybody. We cannot exchange time, and just so everyone is aware that there is no dialogue, like there's no back and forth with the board at that time, we will take questions and respond to them later if there are any questions to address. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. My name is Suzanne Nahomek, and I'm from Concord, and I'm here tonight to talk about America 250. In 2017, the Congress of the United States established the Semi-Quincentennial Commission. That's a big, long word that means 250th anniversary. So, looking forward to July 4th, 2026, we've got a lot of events before that that are coming up. For example, November 16th last year was the 250th anniversary of the Boston Tea Party, and they had a reenactment in Boston Harbor. Last week, we had the 250th anniversary of the First Continental Congress, and we were asked to ring bells in celebration of that. I would like to thank Dave Schwartz and the Riverside Marching Band, who allowed me the privilege of coming over, talking to the students at their Monday night, or Monday afternoon rehearsal, and instead of ringing bells with a marching band, we blew horns and banged drums. The next two big events that are coming up are in April. You might remember Lexington and Concord, if you remember your history, and my favorite one that I'm looking forward to is April 16th, the Midnight Ride of Paul Revere. And we are hoping to find horses and riders in Lake County to participate in that. So how can you help us? Well, I have some packets for each of you, and what we're hoping to do is have someone from the school board represent you guys at a meeting that we are having October 11th. You're all invited. And people from the Ohio, 250, I've got one for you, Dr. Mc. People from the Ohio Commission are going to be there to talk about what's happening in Ohio, and so I would encourage all of you to come. Semi-Quincentennial is hard to remember, but I have my little eagle here, and I'm calling him Quincy. So please join us, get your kids involved. There's all kinds of ways for them to be involved. Thanks.
Right, any other public participation?
Hi, my name's Joe Adino. I'm the parent of three daughters, all of whom left me the second they got the awards tonight. I wanted to discuss the Portrait of a Riverside Beaver and how it relates to the school board. Over the last few months, I've had the very exciting and tedious pleasure of watching the last 12 months' worth of YouTube videos regarding the school board meetings and sessions that you've had. And in watching them, I've had some concerns with the way the school board necessarily reflects the Portrait of a Riverside Beaver. And I don't mean that necessarily for all of you. It's in small pockets, but if this is going to be a document that we're going to put out in front of the students, the ultimate example has to be set by all people who represent the Riverside School District. If you notice, that does not say... And if you notice that the language doesn't say Portrait of a Student, it says Portrait of a Riverside Beaver, and I would assume that all of you would identify as a Riverside Beaver. So let's walk through a couple of them really quickly. One of them is self-awareness. Well, self-awareness for this group would be remembering who you serve, and while you might think that you serve the taxpayers as a whole, ultimately you serve the students and the teachers. Second one I want to point out is high character. An example of having high character is not surprising the board and the administration by adding new business, new business agenda items at the last second. The third one I want to mention is collaboration. If there's any group that should be collaborated with more than anyone else in this county or, excuse me, in this school district, that is the teachers. When, for example, when there was a vote on the responsive classroom, it was asked by the people who voted to get rid of responsive classroom, who they collaborated with, and it was pretty silent when that question was asked. And the fourth one I'll call out is communication. There was a discussion, a lengthy discussion about the undercoating of buses. While that is an important task, there was some, some of you were upset that the administration, while they were, they were in their full right to do so, didn't collaborate with you on the undercoating of buses. Two seconds later, there was a motion to get rid of responsive classroom when there was no collaboration done with any teacher in the school district whatsoever. So I found that very ironic and quite hypocritical. The last one I'll leave you with is leader. We want, that document is to make students become great adults, and that's what this table is full of, is adults. So if you want them to become great leaders, you have to be great leaders yourself, and I'll end with this, while I am not on the school board, I hope that all of you set the ultimate example for the students and teachers of this...
Hi, I'm Jen Caitlin, a parent and resident in the district, and where I know we can't have any direct questions, a lot of mine are rhetorical. So my question is, why is there a rush to push through the Riverside agenda item so quickly without the collaboration that Joe has alluded to? What is some of the board members personally benefiting from this? There doesn't seem to be any reason besides personal benefit that this would be pushed through so quickly. Scott, you mentioned that an owner's rep would help prevent the Riverview and the Parkside equipment failures. However, in the proposal, there is only a request for an AE and a CMAR. So if you think it's so important, I think that that would be an indication that you've rushed through this, and that it was rushed to be put on the agenda. And just because people have seen the plan doesn't mean that the process has been followed. The community overwhelmingly does not want the addition to Riverview, so why are you ignoring the community? The community that brought you to this board, that were so, were so important whenever you were voting, but they're not important now? Denise, I direct this at you, during your campaign, your top priority was the kids. Why is that not the top priority now? You sat on committees where we discussed the facilities and the plan, and this was never brought up until the last minute. The community surveys were just released, and already there's something new that the, that the committee did not come up with, already on the agenda. It seems rushed and unthought out. Personally, I have spent my time away from my job, away from my children. I'm missing a softball game tonight to be here. I don't work for the district. I was not elected to the board. I was not put on the board by a judge. And I personally have put a lot of time into this, and to have everything that the Facilities Committee has put together to be completely disregarded for some personal agenda, I think is a disgrace to the community. Going through with this, you've let the community, the kids down, just for a vote for whatever you guys are trying to, to accomplish here. And really, you should be ashamed of not having the children's needs first. The Lammuth option is more equitable for all of the kids and will provide some more safety measures. Denise, your kid, your granddaughter sits in a trailer at Buckeye.
Hello, Rick Pompous, Leiray Township. Three of our children came through the school district, longtime residents. I kind of want to echo some of the sentiment that you just heard, because I'm confused, frustrated, based on what I'm hearing, and I think that there's a world of more information that's needed and transparency. When you talk about this new agenda item and a proposal for this addition that was not by overwhelming percentages based on the report Mr. Rattino gave, not supported, so seems rushed, as, as was stated, confused why it is being sought so quickly, considering I heard Mr. Rattino say that there was a board meeting on Monday to determine immediate needs and discuss future plans, long-term plans. I'm not sure if that was the consensus meeting that I also heard mention of, but I heard that in the consensus meeting, the short-term consensus, I'm presuming that was including members at the table, was to add eight classrooms to Lammuth and move fifth graders to Lammuth as the short term, and the long term to continue pursuit of a long-term plan. So again, that seems inconsistent with what I'm hearing, that a new agenda item was put on that circumvents that consensus. As to the long-term plan, I understand that in February, there was approval for developing a new facilities plan that was to encompass about eight months to develop a five-year plan. So we're coming soon upon that. I don't know if the timing of the delivery of that plan is still on target for that eight-month timeframe, but again, because it's on the cusp of that timetable, I'm curious to see and hear why the rush to address the immediate needs of Riverview when, also as I heard Dr. Rattino say, the options that the board moves toward with are meant to serve all of the communities, not just benefit of single one, and the one that the taxpayers and survey respondents overwhelmingly stated to address Lammuth seems to do that. So I think more information is needed to answer to and get to the trust and transparency that Dr. Rattino said is essential for this board to establish.
Hi, my name's Bill Robertson. I'm a 73-year-old retired business owner. I'm a member of the Business Advisory Council. While my children go to Riverside, I've been active with Riverside Theater Program for 40 years. I, like you, care about the success of the Riverside schools. My personal belief is that each generation has a responsibility to help the following generations achieve their potential. We need to do this because we need our children to determine their careers and succeed in our system. I support the public school system. All my formal education has been through the public schools, as well as all my family members. I believe in the rule of law. By choosing to live in the USA, we agree to a representative form of government, and we need to respect what our representatives do. I was active in the Menter Schools for 10 years on the Business Advisory Council. I worked with all seven of their superintendents, so I do understand a lot of the process. For Riverside, the officials of our Board of Education, we need to give them our input. That's what we're doing tonight. I've been attending the board meetings as well as all the committee meetings, so they have the three committees that they report. I'm the only public member at any of the committee members, any of the committee meetings I've attended, so none of you have been to any of the committee meetings that I've So none of you have been to any of the committee meetings that I've been to. I can tell you, so what that, all that means is I probably have some knowledge that you haven't achieved yet and I'll share some of that with you. Good news. As a past business owner, fiscal responsibility was a huge issue for me. The school is operating very fiscally responsibly. So they're taking the steps they need to take to be fiscally responsible. Great news. Everyone through the meetings, while there's differences in how things are done, care about the students. So there are no personal agendas. There's nothing to be gained by any of the board members for a personal agenda. There's just differences of opinions. So we need to understand that. There's some major challenges with the district. You know, it's a big district, 64 square miles, eight miles by eight miles. They've got new housing developments coming. It's not a mature district. So they're trying to figure out how they allocate resources to accommodate what's happening. And having sat through everything and having been a business owner, I still don't know the answer. I participated in the surveys. I see the reports. I think what we need to do as a community is we need to support them. I think they're giving us their best effort. There's going to be differences of opinion, but we just need to keep providing the input and working through the process. Thank you.
My name is Matt Ozinga. I'm just here as a parent tonight. Lived here all my life, but for six years down in Southern Ohio. Graduated, walked the halit halls of Ivy and it smells exactly the same. My kids go to school here, I live here, I work here. First off, thank you for coming to your senses and doing what you should have done in the first place by paying our deputies. Scott, you got the highest vote tally when you ran for board education. Congratulations. Your percentage was 19.22%. Denise, you too got the highest vote total at 33.82%. Dennis, you weren't elected. Seems like we have a pretty big issue here relative to the future of the district. Seems like there's a lot of people that aren't really on board. Seems like the public's been pretty clear. None of you ran on any of these issues, not specifically anyways. Some of you actively campaigned against the last levy that was put up for buildings. Here's my concern. 20-plus years ago, you weren't here. I wasn't here, I was a student. Some of these people missed the, she spoke earlier, she was here. But had an opportunity to buy the county home, the voters said nah, school district did it anyways. That wrecked us for 10 years, more than 10 years. That wrecked us. You'll be gone. You'll be gone. You won't be here. My kids will be. I will be. Most of these people's kids will be. You'll be gone. And this is an awful big decision to make for someone that didn't get elected, clearly did not have a mandate with only at most a third of the vote. And so we're going to go ahead and ram this through, not because we should, but because we can, leaving all of us to bear the consequences for years to come. I mean, let's call a duck a duck. Sure, you can pay for it out of PI and what happens when we have other expenses? You start bleeding the general fund. I know we have a lot now, but that's not fiscally responsible. None of us would run our household budgets like that. So again, I would ask that before you go forward, you actually get some consensus here and actually do what you should and consider that we're all going to be here when you're gone.
I'm Crystal Archer on Belmore Street. I have, I hate public speaking, but here we are. This all has made us have to do this. So I have a fifth grader right now. He was at Riverview Elementary. He was the first class at Riverview in 2019. He's had a wonderful education there, but from the very beginning, that school is overcrowded. So I find it kind of surprising when people are saying, oh, we just found out that it's overcrowded. How is that? You need to do your due diligence on the regular and know like how your schools are running and they've made it through these past few years doing what they need to do to get the kids the education they need and the space they have. We can take a little extra time. Mrs. Brewster told me that the Riverview plan would only, would be ready for next fall where Lamuth would take two years. And I think we would have that time at Riverview if need be to make do until we could get in at Lamuth, which 70% of everyone polled said that they wanted. We'll go through it all, but you know, we've had years of experience like on the PTO boards. We all know each other with all the other board members, other booster groups, everything like that. General consensus is from families all over the district is that they do not want to expand Riverview. So I don't understand why you would choose to do that. Like I heard like Mr. Fishel during your one report, you said that you were taking, like listening to the feedback for like bathrooms and signage and you're putting that into play. Why would you not do that for this? This is a much bigger issue. I don't know. So if moving forward with voting in favor of expanding Riverview, I would think twice about that. You should really put some time, so much time went into that survey plan and polling everyone. I took time off of work to go to one of those core facility meetings and give feedback. Like you need to add up and that the current plan did not have parking. It did not have expanded cafeteria. Children cannot even eat in a timely manner. My son packs every day because he can't get through the line in a timely manner. How can we add more children? So before you make a vote, I would suggest that you please go and be a child during the lunchtime, go out on the playground, be a parent at pickup and see how it is. Actually experience it, hold off. And in addition to all the people here, that petition which we forwarded you, it's close to almost 200 now, so it's an additional 200 people that are just asking you to please wait, think a little more and listen to the people that have already given you feedback. It's not a threat, but it's just a reality that all of us very active parents that all know each other, our next new side hustle and hobby will be making sure you're not elected again.
On a little more positive note, private first class Benjamin Weiss graduated from an infantry base in training last Friday. He's aware of all the issues at hand. He wanted me to specifically give a shout out to the football team, Coach Boers, Coach Ish, Coach Rudd and all the other coaches for having so well-prepared him for the rigorous military service. He encourages all of his former classmates to participate fully in Riverside in the athletics and to one day join him in the army. At this time, I'd also like to apologize to the entire Riverside District, the teachers. I'm glad so many of you are present for my prior support of Mr. Fishel and my participation in fear-mongering regarding CRT and SEL. I had the privilege quite a while ago of meeting with Dr. Basich and Principal Mayor and they convinced me that the, despite the school voting to buy the SEL, that it is not being used to indoctrinate our children. I have three sons, one of whom's graduated, two are still here. And I can tell you as a parent, I do not believe this district has ever participated in trying to indoctrinate children in any kind of an ideology that would be concerning I think Mr. Ozinga eloquently stated the consequences of going against what the people want in regard to this vote to go forward with Riverview instead of Lamuth. And one of the, you're welcome. And also with the time remaining, I wanted to ask a question that I would have had for Dan McIntyre when he was doing his ethics presentation. My question is this, what kind of ethics or law issue arises out of the fact pattern of a duly-elected and serving school board member creating a federal super PAC and then utilizing that super PAC as a weapon to fund school board races, not only through the county, but directly in the school district in which he served, colluding directly with the candidates and their election committees and distributing false information about another seated board member during the election day where he participated in distributing not only his own information, but that of the Republican Party as well as the candidates, which are clear violations of federal and state election laws. There is currently a Federal Election Commission investigation going on into these matters and it is expected there will be indictments forthcoming. Thank you.
I'm Gina Parker from Leroy. I've never agreed 100% with any one board member, but I respected their opinions because I knew they reviewed and considered all information prior to the decision. That was not the case at the August 15th board meeting. I did not come here to question why three board members think they know more about bus maintenance than the superintendent, transportation director and mechanics, or to question why they think, why they think they know more about the needs of the classrooms than the director of curriculum, principals and teachers. And unfortunately, I do not have enough time to address the ridiculousness of tonight's agenda item of adding Riverview, adding on to Riverview Elementary, but it just goes to show how certain board members lack interest in doing what's best for the community or even listening to the community for that matter. What concerns me the most is the lack of knowledge one had before voting. I sent emails to those that voted for the bus undercoating contract and against responsive classroom, asking who they spoke to in the district and what they observed, but did not get any answers to any of my questions, which was very disappointing. According to Dr. Malakar, she did not have any in-depth conversations with board members about responsive classrooms and was not aware of any conversations held with teachers or principals. Mr. Andre said that no one reached out to him following his presentation at the June board meeting, yet three board members voted to approve the contract with armor linings. What baffles me is that these three members voted to accept that $12,000 contract for bus undercoating, which only Scott Fishel received prior to the August meeting, but voted against the hourly rate increase of only $5 for event security at the September 12 meeting due to a lack of evidence for the increase. Where's the common sense there? I also don't like how focused members are on Riverside's rankings compared to other school districts. At the August 15th meeting, Mr. Fishel said Riverside was ranked 246 in the state out of over 600. Now he makes decisions based as a businessman. However, his company's better business bureau rating is a D minus compared to other looking companies. It is a fear season, concerned about his rankings when it suits him. People should do what they do best and they should rely on others, experts in their respective fields to advise in those areas. If this means deferring to people like the superintendent, treasurer, directors, teachers and principals, then that's what they need to do. Imagine how morale is going to change or has maybe already started changing if the expertise of those professionals is disregarded, rejected and ignored. That would be more harm to the district than anything found in responsive classroom. I cannot properly articulate the level of disappointment I feel when the members of the board are pushing for their own agendas over the best interests of our district, its staff, its students and its community.
Hello, my name is Katie Perdum. I have five kids, four of which are in the district. And when I first got the questionnaire regarding the changes to the district, I was actually happy. I was like, thank God, finally something is happening. Then I read it and I was appalled. Not only are you rushing to put an addition onto a brand-new school without thinking this through, but you have two older schools in the district that need severe safety measures. Two of my kids go to Buckeye Elementary and this is going to make me tear up. I have an eight-year-old, an eight-year-old who is in a trailer that is not connected to the elementary school, who has to walk in the elements to go to the bathroom, to go to the nurse, to go to the office by herself with a key fob. Tell me how that is safe because it is not. She is surrounded by a four-foot-tall chain-link fence that is never locked and even if it is, who cares because any predator or person can hop it and steal my child. We live in a day and age where unfortunately kidnappings and school shootings are prevalent where we have to think that way, but it is uncalled-for that you are disregarding these safety measures of not just children, but also teachers who have to be forced to learn in these conditions. And you are trying to force putting on an addition to a school where you haven't given it any thought and shoving it down our throats and giving us two options. You haven't even addressed Buckeye except for the long-term and you didn't even give an issue. When is Buckeye's long-term? Is it a year from now? Is it five years from now? Is it 10 years from now when my kids are out of school? For seven years, I have brought this issue to light. Seven years since I have moved into this district. My son was in fifth grade there and had told me that there was a homeless person living under the trailers. They found alcohol bottles. They found pillows for proof of life. Tell me how that is safe because it is not safe. You preach one community, but you are not doing one community. You are doing one school and that is not okay. You need to look at the focus of all the safety issues for the kids in this district, not just one school, not because you're projecting what is going to be potential down the road when this new development hasn't even broke ground yet. Look at the kids that need the actual help right now because you pushed out fifth graders from Buckeye and from Melridge to put in preschoolers. And I want to know, why are preschoolers not in the trailers? Because it's not safe. So how is it not, how is it safe for seven to nine-year-olds, but it's not safe for three to four-year-olds? You need to do something immediately about that. Add in a security vestibule because the vestibule that you put on the front of that building does nothing to save my daughter. If there is ever an attack, who's going to save my kid? It's up to me then. You are not preaching one community and you need to start because this is absolutely ridiculous. Look into Buckeye, look into Melridge and do what's best for the children and the safety
Katie, I agree with you 100%.
You obviously don't.
Stick around and you will hear the whole story.
I'm Matt Katchke. I'm a parent in the district. When I first got the emails about the community involvement for facilities planning, I was excited. I attended every opportunity that I could get to. I was probably at three or four of the meetings to hear all of the feedback, to go through the surveys, to hear the direction as to why that committee was formed in the first place. And the big one was community involvement, community support for what we're doing going forward. The last time we had a levy on the ballot, it failed because we didn't have community support and there were a lot of questions about why that happened. I was told this committee was formed to try to get information from the public before things got pushed forward. I was at the meeting on Monday that Dr. Rotino mentioned where he gave the summary of the surveys and put forth the plan that he planned to present on Thursday. I was at a work conference downtown Cleveland this week. Tuesday night, my phone's blowing up on social media as everyone's posting things about the entrance of the new agenda item for Riverview that went completely against everything that the survey showed, what was going to be brought forward, to the point where at 10:30 at night, I emailed Dr. Rotino personally to say, hey, is this, is this real? Like is it false information? How should I respond? He called me back Wednesday morning. We talked. That's why I'm here. It was, it was blindsided from everybody. From my understanding, the deadline that was put forward to Dr. Rotino to bring a plan for how to move forward was for October. So the fact that he delivered a plan with community involvement and community support a month early and then 48 hours before, an end-around proposal gets put on the agenda is just fishy to me entirely because it completely negates the work that's been done by the community for the entire summer. So I personally, I'm in Melridge District. We've also lived in Buckeye District. We felt left out when the two new schools were built. For me, it's not about Riverview's getting all the new things. At these meetings, Riverview's principal was there expressing concerns about lunches would have to be moved up to 10:30 in the morning or as late as 1:45 in the afternoon to handle the additional children. Dr. Basich said it's going to be, it's going to be tight, but he thought Lamuth could handle it. The transition for fifth graders there now has been extremely well-received. The Lamuth solution applies to The Lamuth solution applies to the entire district so that nobody feels left out. It checks all the boxes with 75% of community support, and I simply cannot fathom why this, this motion for Riverview was, was forced in at the last minute when all of the data shows otherwise. Thank you.
I am Marsha Simonoff. I'm a grandma. But I just came off of two years of my grandparents living with me.
I'm sorry, what is your name again?
Marsha Simonoff. I put three children through this district, two through open enrollment. That's what this district means to me. I fought for my two to be here through open enrollment. When my husband proposed to me 25 years ago, I said, wait a minute before I answer you only if you'll sell your mentor house and move to painful town. That's what this district has meant to me all these years. I was shocked this week. I'm disabled. I don't get out a lot. Normally, I watch the board meetings on YouTube. The next day, I watch them. Every week. I was shocked this week to look to see after filling out the survey, watching the video, feeling that there was transparency, they were open to community input, to see that something was put on. No, three people want to push through adding on to Riverview. That was shocking to me, because who are you to do that when the community... And I am looking at you, you, and you, and you were not elected.
All right, Sean Parker, Leroy Township. I'm sorry, I'm not gonna be nearly as eloquent as you were. I am speaking from a place of frustration, disappointment, and anger, and I have notes, so I don't say anything inappropriate. Side note, I wrote this prior to hearing that Fischel, Brewster, and Keeney, sorry, wasted over $10,000 of our money on putting forward a vote on undercoating without any information being shared with the board members or the public. After watching these school board meetings for several years, I cannot adequately verbalize my disappointment in several of the current board members. It's become very clear that three members of our board are only concerned about their personal agenda and have zero interest in listening to the community or school stakeholders. I have seen meeting after meeting where Scott Fischel does not follow Ohio School Board Code of Ethics. He often does not pay attention to others' comments, and when he does, he attempts to push his views by talking over those who disagree with him. I have never heard on, what he personally, I'm sorry, scratch that. I have never heard him make any decision based on collaboration with those affected by his decision, but rather votes on what he personally wants. After listening to Brewster continually bash Riverside Education and the school district in her campaign, I've yet to see her bring any original thoughts to this board. She's only parroted and repeated the comments made by Fischel as her own. I have not heard anything that supports that she has independently researched decisions or done anything to look at the larger good. I was originally excited to see Mr. Keeney get onto the board. Sorry, my text is really small. I've seen him on other boards. I've worked with him on other boards, and he always seemed to be open to listen to reason and made the decisions for what we thought was best. Unfortunately, it seems he's just another official's puppet, and is here only to support the official vote. You can't convince me that they're here for the greater good when all they do is vote on what Mr. Fischel wants. I'm running out of time. I've got a lot on here, but I don't want to run out of time with this. You know, it's just, it's extremely disappointing. Mr. Fischel, we had a vote last week, or you brought it up last week. $5, $5 for the safety of our students, for our schools, for our spectators. You were for it. You're like, hey, this is what the going rate is. Mr. Keeney questions it, and then you disagree with it, and you voted down. The three of you are intent on doing anything that Ms. Grassi and Ms. Korninski want to do. You constantly vote the opposite. Clearly, there's nothing on the best in the top two. All I can say, at the end of the day, please do better. This is sad.
Hello, my name's Kyle April. I don't know, I'm sure you guys are a little sick of hearing the same message. I don't know if you guys are getting it. I'm a parent of two children at Riverside Schools. They attend Riverview Elementary. I just want to say that we cannot be happier with Riverview Elementary and the work that they're doing there. Our kids are getting a good education. We feel that they're safe, and we can't be happier. That being said, we do recognize the challenges that Riverview is gonna be facing in the future, especially with overcrowding, and that the district is gonna be facing. And we realize the need for, let's call it what it is, a Band-Aid. And so my wife and I were excited when we got the option to participate in the survey. That being said, we were equally shocked that somehow, you know, we completed the survey, and then a couple days later, either miraculously, incompetently, or what's infinitely worse nefariously, the board had decided to charter a path forward. How did that, what information was used to make that decision? I'm not sure why you're shaking your head, Mr. Fischel, because I don't think you've been listening to anything that anybody's said. Yeah, just three weeks ago, or the last board meeting, Mr. Keeney was, didn't have all the information regarding a race for our police officers, and he wanted more information. Fair enough. I can't imagine that you had all the information to make a decision regarding this issue, regarding the spending for $5,000. It's just not beating the eye test. What aren't you telling us? You guys had the opportunity with Ms. Grassi's motion to push this down the road. Why are you guys right? Tell me why you're right. I'm not saying you're wrong. Tell me why you're right. Why did you guys punt on that opportunity tonight?
Again, there's no dialogue between the board right now.
It's a rhetorical question. I don't need to answer. I just need to listen, hear what I'm saying. I'm not expecting a dialogue, and frankly, I wouldn't expect them to offer a response Think about it. What are you guys, what, what aren't you telling us? What is being hidden from us? This has been easy talk, because the message has been over and over again, and I'm sure there's a line behind me, there are people that are gonna say the exact same thing. You need to do better for the taxpayers. You need to do better for the citizens of this community, and you really need to do better for the children of Riverside School District. Thanks.
I'm Mike Gerson. I live in Grand River, Ohio. I have one at Lamuth currently. I guess Mr. Fischel is uniquely gifted here, because every time somebody came up to share their views, it was the first time he heard it, right? He's never heard it before. It's crazy. It's a puppet. All right. Yeah. And you, $250 buys you a seat on the board is ridiculous. I am not talking about the school plan, because it's fallen on deaf ears. People are out there. I am more concerned with the consistent malfeasance, misappropriation of funds, the misuse of our tax dollars to push your own agendas, to support your own personal pocketbooks likely. I have three months' worth of finance audit and personnel committee meetings here. The only two board members present, Jennifer Harden and Denise Brewster, talking about the undercoating of the buses, right? June 20th was the last one. It was followed up by an email from you. "After our discussion this morning with Kyle, I looked up Pro Fleet out of Cantor. This company is comparable to Crown," I'm assuming Crown, he didn't tell you how to spell it, "and it has a portable application process and 35 years into business. I think it is a viable option to consider. I read through their website, and I found this article that says it all." I read through that article. It said it all. "At least we have one bus that received the Crown," again, you should have asked him to spell check, "application to compare others in our fleet that could benefit from Pro Fleet's product. We will discuss further at the board meeting." You didn't. You didn't discuss further. You didn't discuss further at the board meeting. You didn't reach out to the transportation director. You didn't take their word for it when they're supposed to be figuring out what's the best option. You were childish and disrespectful at that meeting, talking down to them. You should be ashamed of yourself. June 27th, you had your meeting. You presented the facts of it. No talk. Fast forward to August 15th at 2:00 PM. Mr. Fischel, in his private email, writeonroofinginc.com, received an estimate with no prior communication available through public participation quest. "Dear customer, please review the attached estimate 302. Feel free to contact us if you have any questions." From Armor Linings, Mr. Ray Lucic. Wasn't presented to the board. You guys didn't get to look at it. You didn't talk about it. You just pushed it through and voted on it, because you got a puppet and another puppet to just vote on anything they want.
My name is Jen Yorko, and I'm a parent in the district and an alumni at Riverside High School. Scott, you mentioned the larger building for Riverview was not approved by the state. Has the idea of an addition been approved by the state? If a quick solution is needed, why are trailers not being considered at this location, as it's been a longtime fix and a recent fix for other elementary school locations? The Lamuth addition has clearly been supported by the community, and members of the board have turned a blind eye. Additionally, we have heard tonight that there's staffing expense savings, which includes healthcare expenses, which are up roughly 25%. This decision is clearly rushed and doesn't have an idea of Riverside's one-community motto, nor does it show the board has done its due diligence. The five-year budget is due to come in in November. Why wouldn't the board spend time reviewing this upcoming information and use it to make a more informed decision? There's nothing more urgent tonight than for you to postpone this vote, do your due diligence, and provide the community with more specific details.
My name is Danielle Asgair. I have a fifth-grade daughter at Riverview. You might recognize my name. Me and Crystal are the ones that repeatedly emailed all of you in assistance and in help with helping me and Crystal bring down the woman that stole from Riverview. None of you, I, do you have a working email, Mr. Fischel? Oh, we're not allowed to ask questions. We're not allowed to. That's fine. Because you've never responded to anything, even to Crystal's emails to try to stop this tonight. No response. So I feel like we need to help you out. Yeah. Do you feel like this is going well? I don't, at all, at all. So I will say, if I have questions about Buckeye, if I have, if I have questions about Buckeye, I go to Jen Kalin, I go to Joe Aldino, who should be sitting right there, and I go to Jen Kalin, Jen Yorko, if I have questions about Buckeye. I go to Crystal, Sarah Mealy, Rachel Mullis about questions about Riverview, Elizabeth Lumen about questions about Melridge. I listen to the people that actually know what they're talking about. Our teachers, our parents that are in their day-to-day know what's going on. You don't. I feel like I shouldn't have to have a ride-or-die parent group to make sure that stuff like this doesn't go crazy. I shouldn't need, there should be huge text threads going all night about what do we do? What's tomorrow's plan? If this goes through and says yes, what's our next plan? We're already discussing it. We're already discussing what's next for us, what's next for our teachers. And our Riverview teachers have been nothing but fantastic to me and Crystal. They were the only ones in this whole district, whole district, that checked in on me and Crystal while we were going through this ordeal. That stopped a woman from stealing thousands and thousands, 14 felonies, but I bet you guys don't know that, because you never want to reach out. Never once. We are your community. Crystal, oh, Sarah and Rachel, how many, how much money do we have raised from Walkathon, from this community for Riverview?
Right now, we are at $26,000.
That's not gonna keep happening. That's not gonna keep happening, at all. I'm done. I don't know why I'm still here. I don't. I'm so mad. But me and Crystal are coming to another board meeting another time to address those things, which you guys know, because you've got my emails. But you, you didn't.
Any other public participation? Can't guess. Sorry.
My name's Katie Tomko. I have three children, two of which are in the district. If my younger two should graduate from Riverside, they would be fourth-generation graduates. I do have invested interest in this district for that reason alone. So I do want to start off by saying that I do agree with a statement that some of you have made, which is the concern around our test scores and instruction. A three-and-a-half-star rating by the Department of Education and Workforce is unacceptable in this district. However, instead of addressing this true concern through professional development, training, database decision-making, and intention, you are using your position to promote your personal political agendas that will have no impact on education. Mrs. Brewster, although I didn't vote for you, I am very familiar with your campaign that you ran on, in which you focused on families first. I do not understand how you can, you can truly believe that putting families first is ignoring the results of the district that you've recently received. You also made a statement in the work session earlier that you are part of the new side. What does that mean? It sounds like you've already predetermined your voting stance prior to viewing agendas, conducting research, participating in discussion. As a result of the recent behaviors of some members of this school board, I am publicly requesting Mr. Fischel, Mrs. Brewster, and Mr. Keeney step down from your board positions You have demonstrated you are not capable of ethically serving and representing the community as an elected and non-elected official on the school board.
Okay. Jessica Nagy, I have two kids in the district. First, I want to give a huge shout-out to the administration and teachers for a fantastic start to the year. Special shout-out to Dr. Basich. He had a tremendous start at Lamuth. Seriously, this guy is like a rock star, his team. He's already used the portrait of a Riverside Beaver in his presentations. I can't, I mean, this is the best start my son has ever had in this district, and my daughter at the campus. So with that being said, where do we begin? I've come to so many of these meetings now. Mr. Fischel, I don't, I, listen, I don't know why everybody's so surprised this man was on a podcast saying he wanted to infiltrate and take over our schools. So he's doing just that. You're not listening. You don't listen to any of, of the people here. You don't listen to the teachers. You got rid of SCL learning. You don't even know what it means. Responsive classroom, if you want your precious test scores to be better, you need to tune into these students. Some of these students go without food. Some of these students have lost a parent. We had a student die. They are going through a mendous weight on their shoulders, and if these teachers don't get to check in with them every day, they can't do individualized learning plans with them. You three just took away so much from these students. You have no idea. You're not here for these kids. The last meeting, you were like, how did I not know about this crowding for two and a half years? Dude, I've been here for two and a half years, and I've learned about it. You don't listen. You push your agenda, and mark my words, even if I have to run against you myself, you will not be here next election. I've given you all the tools. I've given you research. I email you to the woman who said, he doesn't respond. I've tried for two and a half years. It's, I digress. Listen, you don't listen to research. You don't listen to these teachers. You don't listen to the experts. You want to push your own agenda. I'm very disappointed in you, Ms. Brewster. I tried to give you a shout-out the last time I was here, months ago, and you've done nothing in the meantime. You do what he wants, and that's wrong. You use our judicial system illegally. You pushed him through illegally. You had two candidates that had education on their background for this board. He shouldn't be here. I don't even know what's going on here, but these kids are the ones suffering. My children are suffering, and this needs to stop. So you will not be here after this election, and when he needs to run, everybody's now seeing it, so things are about to change, so please get used to it.
Sorry, I came from the peanut gallery out there. I didn't plan on speaking tonight. I actually just came from a seventh-grade basketball practice.
Your name?
My name is Jeff Jordan. I have three kids in the district. I have two at Lamuth and one at Melridge. And I didn't plan on speaking, but I do want to share a Facebook post that I wrote on November 6th, 2023. So if that wasn't election day, it was very close to it. And this was in response to a podcast that Mr. Fischel did regarding the Joshua PAC. So this is a... imposing his will, those are your words, sir, on the school districts. Any organization or individual who is attempting to use the school board as a vehicle to promote their own political agenda, left or right, have no place making decisions for our kids. And I stand by that statement. They don't seem, meaning you three, don't seem to have any interest in actually doing the work of a school board member, just talking about hot-button issues like CRT and social and emotional learning. So that was written on November 6th, 2023. I think that's come to pass here tonight. Thank you.
I have two students in the Riverside District. And one of the things that came up today was trust. And it seems like the board members are mystified as to why there's not trust in the school board. Well, part of it might be because not everyone on the school board was actually elected, right? And I know that some people suggested that we should have faith in our representative government. It's only a representative government if it was elected. If we didn't elect the members of the board, we can't trust them. Also, the other reason why we can't trust them is because they don't do what they said they were going to do. They don't represent the community. They don't represent the school district. They represent their personal gain or their political agenda. Mr. Fishel, I'm looking at you because everyone here knows that you have your own personal agenda, which is very political, which is very personal. And I am sure if anyone dug into your finances, they probably find that there are probably some shady deals going on in the background, which is probably why you'd be pushing things that aren't aligned with what the community wants. I mean, what other reason would you choose to do something that the community obviously doesn't want you to do? There isn't financial reasons. It's not going to save the district money. It's not going to benefit the district. So if you're pushing something through that the community doesn't want, and I've heard the boards say that they want the community to be on board with things, maybe we should do what the community wants. Makes sense to me. You don't respond to members of the district that are asking you questions. That's part of your job. Why did you join the school board? Did you join the school board to help the community?
No.
Did you join the school board to help the school district?
No.
I mean, really? What did you join the school board for?
CRT.
I mean, I can't come up with a single reason except for personal gain. And reality is, you're not going to get here by reelection. So I don't know what your agenda is, but you better get it done real quick because you're going to be gone. Because by the time you help me out, you'll be gone. And I think everyone here is really upset at you, and I hope it's getting through to you. All of you, all of you are replaceable. We can have elections again, and you will all be replaced. If you don't do what the community wants, if you don't represent the school district and you don't help our children, you're gone.
Oh, I have four children, three of which are in the district. We have, sorry, we have two children currently at Melrich and one at Lamuth. Sorry. Dr. Retino discussed the why for this facility's plan as being to decrease the disparities between the buildings, yet pushing forward the River View plan tonight doesn't do that at all. It was discussed about community decision, involvement, and feedback, and transparency, yet you added this vote last minute to the agenda. Pushing this vote through without doing your due diligence goes against all of this. We've had a phenomenal experience at Melrich and Lamuth and could say that our children are receiving an exceptional education solely because of the students, solely because of the teachers and staff at our schools, despite the failing buildings and lack of resources that they have to work with. What do anticipate the ramifications will be for the future Riverside issues on the ballot if you move forward with this vote tonight and make a decision that goes against what our community supports? Mr. Fishel, obviously, we all really don't like you. I apologize for that. I would not trust your company to put a roof over my family's head, and it is unfortunate for our students, teachers, and families that you're in a position to make decisions for our district.
Hi, my name is Rachel Mullis. I am, I have one child, second grader at River View. I didn't want to come up here because I'm really emotional, but I'm going to come up here. I'm new to the district. I was not, there's no legacy in my family. I moved out here the summer before my son started kindergarten. So we were here about a year when he started kindergarten, and my kid loves, loves Riverside. He is like the epitome of a Beaver. It all started, actually, with Dr. Basich there. At the first homecoming parade we went to, he handed him a Beaver sticker for the car, and my kid was sold, okay? He is, he is the ultimate Beaver. At River View, yeah, we have a lot of kids. We're overcrowded, like we're at capacity. But we don't need an addition to River View. We need all of our other Beavers to have something at least close to what we have. We don't need to worry about the kids at Buckeye and the kids at Melrich. We need to get our fifth graders all together at Lamuth. Give them opportunities. These fifth graders, they need to be with sixth and seventh graders. They need to have more ability to be involved with sports, to be involved with clubs, to be involved with kids that are pre-teens like them, not little elementary school kids. You know what my kid gets? I mean, he loves all the sports kids because he's a little sports kid, and they play ball with him and throw. But you know what? A lot of kids, these fifth graders, they teach them bad words, too. They need to go and be with the other kids their age. Secondly, you talk about trust. Yeah, like, I'm new here, and I realize there's no trust. And that is because everybody, we keep on forgetting about these schools that are important. River View is not the end-all, be-all. It is for me, because that's where my kid is, but it's not for the kids in the other schools. And lastly, another thing I want to mention, and it's been mentioned a couple times here tonight with this podcast, Mr. Fishel's podcast with this Joshua Super PAC. This is what he said. He said, "The Board of Education has ultimate power. Not even the governor can tell them what to do." And that is why he ran and we foolishly elected him so that he could have the ultimate power that the governor could not even tell him. He cannot do the things he's trying to do like tonight.
Is there any other public participation?
Can we ask for resignations?
Good.
Was the news invited?
News here.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Donna Lino. I'm a parent of a River View student. I love him. I love River View. I love our principal. I love his past teachers. They've all been amazing. I also do not agree that this should be pushed forward tonight. I don't think it's in the best interest of the whole district. And the few classrooms that would be added do not encompass the huge allotment that's going to be built. And my, I live on Melmar, so my understanding is that that development is being built. We will be pushed out of River View, which breaks my heart, Mrs. Avery. I love you. We, like, I have built a community in River View, but I also understand that this district is huge. We've all been sitting here for hours, and I am sweating. Like, I swear, I just lost 5,000 pounds and sitting here in this heat. Like, obviously, there's stuff that needs to be different besides just one school, and that's unfortunate for me to have to say because I am River View. And so I do think that this issue should just be pushed off tonight and just taken consideration of what the public wants. Definitely not here to bash anyone. I don't know anybody personally. I don't care, really. I just want what's best for our community as a whole. So I would ask you just to, like, think about it a little bit more, push off the decision, maybe do another survey. Everyone seemed to really like the survey and being involved. I personally took notes in my own little PowerPoint, based on the PowerPoint that was presented. So I think we all kind of did our own due diligence with that, and I would appreciate the board listening to that as well.
Any other public participation? All right, that brings us to tonight's consent agenda. First up is finance and audit.
I'd like to hear a motion to approve items A through M on the finance audit agenda for this evening.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I would just like to publicly thank the people who donated funds. We have $2,000 from OHSAA Athletic Inter enrichment fund to Riverside Athletics. We have six outdoor benches from the Lumen family to Lamuth Middle School. We have $719.45 from the class of 1961 to the Henry F. Lamuth Memorial Scholarship Fund, and we have a saxophone from the Harden family to Lamuth Middle School. So thank you for those.
Take the roll, please.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Lori Krenisky.
Aye.
Lynn DeGracy.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings us to personnel. Mr. Keeney, just remind, just remind you about the one we added. Oh, yes.
Okay. I'll give you the motion to approve items A through J on the agenda.
A second.
Any discussion?
I would just like to remind folks that that does include the security increase rate, so.
As far as discussion, I'm glad we were able to take our time to look at what was being paid across the county and do our homework because obviously it provided the information I needed in order to make the right decision tonight.
Yeah, and I would like to also add, Mr. Keeney taking the time to address something that was rushed onto the agenda without discussion. I would like to know, who put that on the agenda? Does anyone know?
Well, I believe in the administration with the Assistant Superintendent, myself, and Dr. Retino with discussion with the Sheriff's Office, they had requested it was increased at the 45.
And so then the Sheriff's Office, after talking with you the next day, put out a notice it would be 50?
We received a communication that morning, correct, starting January 1st.
So you spoke with them the day before, and they said 45 would be good, and the next day they said 50?
No, it was on the agenda 48 hours before. It wasn't, it wasn't put on there. We spoke with them as we were looking to fill some of our Friday night spots, and we were having some issues with filling those spots. That's why the 45 went onto that agenda specifically and the timing that we talked about. Once that motion was voted down, we received, we received motion. We received the notice that next day.
All right, thank you for that because what I would have preferred as a board member was just to be made aware of that. You know, previously, when we didn't have any deputies working in our schools, and you weren't here, I understand that, we were working with Mr. Kalas as superintendent. I brought it forth to hire deputies for security.
I'm sorry.
So.
We have to have to keep the audience quiet during this discussion. Thank you.
So I, so I brought that forth to hire deputies for security and was able to go ahead and get the first one going and then fill out the rest of the district. All I'm saying is with that awareness, a little, little discussion, you know, I would have been able to talk with the Sheriff's Department and find out what their, what their thoughts and desires were. So all I'm saying, this is a small item, but I'm just thanking Mr. Keeney for taking the time to, to address it. We would not have looked good if we approved $45 and then a day later, the Sheriff's Department.
I would, I would like to, like, remind.
Excuse me, I'm not finished yet, okay? So I'm just saying, thank you, Mr. Keeney, for bringing that up, and, and thank you for the board for taking the time to see what the Sheriff's Department wants, and now we're going to go ahead and pass what they've requested.
So I would like to remind Mr. Fishel that I think the shoe fits on both sides, I guess, you know? Like, I think the board would have appreciated the same kind of consideration when we had voted on bus undercoating and didn't have that contract to review. And I think I had at that time asked that that be pulled off the agenda and said, how can we vote on something without any knowledge, without even having a contract in our hands to look at prior to the board meeting, so.
Yeah, the problem is that had been discussed for like three or four months.
But we did not have an opportunity to review that.
So again, I, I'm just going to ask, while the discussion's going on at the board table, I do need to ask the audience to please let us have that discussion. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this motion? Okay, please pull the board.
Lori Krenisky.
Aye.
Lynn DeGracy.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings us, brings us to the consent agenda for curriculum and programming.
Okay. I move to approve the items listed on the curriculum and programming consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A through F.
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
It's nice to see trips back on our agendas.
Yes, and I'm particularly, you know, all of the trips are very worthwhile and provide authentic experiences for the, our students, in particular, the drama program that's going to be visiting London and, and itinerary, and we've checked all the boxes as far as the company, and everything is, is all set, correct? So, thank you. All right, so there's no further discussion. Mr. Pleco, will you please call the roll?
Can I just say one more thing? There is a list of, in here and under item F, of all the booster groups and support organizations, and just personally, I would like to thank them for all the hard work that they do throughout the year, raising all kinds of dollars and providing all kinds of support for our administration, our staff, and our students. I just want to thank them publicly for that, so.
All right. Mr. Pleco, could you please call the roll?
Lynn DeGracy.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Lori Krenisky.
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings us to the agenda item under Board of Education. Mr. Fishel?
Under Board of Education Business.
Number 15.
Right? Board of Education Business?
Yes.
So Riverside Local School District hereby approves moving forward with building an eight classroom addition onto River View Elementary School and directs the administration to publish a request for qualifications for a design professional and construction manager at risk. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there discussion?
I'll just go on record again, just saying again that this is not recommended by the district, it's not recommended by the community. We've not had a chance to vet it out and to consider all aspects of it. I'm not going to belabor it more than that. I think just that simple, so.
I would agree. It's not recommended by our administration, so I'm, I don't know. Or the community, correct. There's nothing else I can say.
How do you move forward with it? They should have.
Again, I'm going to ask, I'm sorry, I do need to ask again for the public to please allow the discussion to happen at the table. I understand, I just, I just need to ask everybody to please do that.
I understood, but it seems like there's some answers.
I, I understand. Thank you.
Okay, so this is the discussion time.
The blatant disregard is just amazing.
If there's any discussion, yes, yes. If there's any discussion, yes, yes.
You know, the district administrators and many of the staff know that since I got on the board in January, I have spent countless hours meeting with administrators, going to schools, doing my homework. I am a 42-year experience teacher and principal, I started my career in Riverside, I also worked at Southeast Lynnhurst for four years as a principal, and 17 years in West Yaga Local Schools as a principal. And I, you know, really try to make sure I'm making informed decisions. I also was appointed back in February to serve on the Facility Committee that's been in operation, and I've attended every meeting, there was a duplicate meeting held in the evening, and I had a conflict, but I had gone to the original meeting, so. And I've worked with, you know, all the administrators on that committee, and also the one community member that initially was on the committee, Jen Craylon, and.
Kaylin.
Kaylin, sorry. Kaylin, I'm sorry. But, you know, almost all of our conversation during the whole summer when we had focus groups was all about long-term planning, what do we wanna see? We spent most of our time, you know, sussing that out and getting, you know, consensus on, you know, possibly building a new middle school. And that was future, but, you know, there were still a lot of concerns, and Jen, you know, she was formerly a PTO president over at Buckeye. I have grandchildren that either have gone through Buckeye or currently there, very concerned about the, what we call legacy buildings, you know, they're older buildings, and, you know, being in the modulators for over five years is way too long. I didn't hear enough information, or enough interest in what to do about those buildings. I think it's long overdue, you know, to do something about Buckeye and Melridge, because, you know, even though our maintenance department has gone above and beyond to, you know, put on, you know, like, the steps to get up to the, the modulators and fix, you know, the, the leaks and the mold and the thing, I, I just feel that, you know, even though, and I toured with, you know, Mrs. Smolin, you know, that building, and even though we took out three 5th grade classrooms, we then put in two preschools and a multi-handicap autism unit, so we really didn't gain any space. And then, you know, I have a background, one year I spent helping out with some preschool administration, and you have to have a room for speech therapy, you have to have, you know, in other words, a, you know, basically, they have to have a private area where they change, you know, kids. And so, staff with the multi, you know, with the program, they basically, you know, and the other program, the multi-handicap, we lost the two-staff bathroom, so now the staff can only use the bathroom in the kitchen or the old clinic. But we also have a room where there's four different intervention people, and they are, you know, trying to work in the same space and, and help kids, and it's very crowded. In order to make room, we had to use for the principal of preschool and for speech, we.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask, I do need to ask the audience, please, please, we have to have the discussion at the table, I'm gonna ask again, please.
I'm just saying that the, the wings of the stage are now being used to provide space for the administrator for the preschool, but also speech services. Not ideal when at Buckeye and Melridge, there's only one gym that's used for lunch, and it's used for, you know, basically gym, and so there's noise in there all the time, it's not ideal. But all I'm, all I'm saying is, I-
Okay, I'm sorry, real quick, guys, I'm serious, I, I have to ask the audience, please, I get it, I, I really do, but I need you to ask the audience to please let the discussion happen at the table, or I will have to clear the room, because we do need to have the discussion to make the vote.
Yeah.
I, I understand, I, I understand, please, but I'm asking everybody to please let us, that the discussion happen.
So, I applaud the staff and parents and the maintenance department for doing their best in the situation in these two buildings, and I feel it's time to start meeting with Buckeye and Melridge parents this year to start planning next steps to build and renovate, build or renovate, starting, you know, the following year. But you just can't snap your fingers and do that now, it's going to take a year to do that. On the side of Lamuth, Lamuth is a great option to pull all the 5th grades in. The, you know, I feel it fits in with the long-term planning, I realize the number of students in our district is dramatically going to change in the next three years, and it's also going to take two years before we even can move our 5th graders out. And we always already have overcrowded conditions at Riverview, it's a building that was created for four sections at a grade level, many of which, with exception of kindergarten, have a pod, and right now, we have five sections of kindergarten, 3rd and 5th grades. 1st grade, which should have had five sections in kindergarten, about, when they were in kindergarten, 1st grade, they didn't have any more space, so they have four sections of 26, 27 kids. And I'm just going to tell you, any educator with their salt, and I, I have come across many in my career, 26 in the primary is not good. It's, and, and I've heard it from people in this district. Are they be doing our best to serve them? Of course we are, but it's not ideal. And so, all I'm saying is, two classrooms that are used by the special needs were taken away to make room for these 5th sections at these grade levels. This year, when I went to the tailgate event, and I approached the Riverview, what do you call it, the Riverview tent, where they were, you know, sharing information, the PTO lady told me, yeah, we lost our music room. That's the first I heard of it, and Dr. Retino was there, and I went over to him and I said, is this true? I, as a board member, was not informed of how overcrowded or that we have used or lost our music room over at Riverview. So, I, I'm just going to say, the housing developments that feed into Riverview now and in the future, even if you moved 5th grade out of the building, will not suffice. You simply cannot make do with drywalling pods, packing students into spaces when you're already overcrowded. These are Band-Aid approaches, and like the modular classrooms, they're not permanent solutions. Fairway Pines has 60 homes they are completing. Harbor Crossings, which is a new development that no one even talked about, I don't know if you had heard about it, Dr. Retino or Gary, but I, I've learned that it's in the second stage of the planning committee, and it's gonna be built off Fairway Nursery, Fairport Nursery Road, will bring 70 more traditional homes to Riverview, along with the 1,300 new homes over 10 years for the casement development. And that will begin in 2026, right behind Riverview. So, for over 20 years, casement has been developing, has been known that casement's been developing these acres, the question was, when were they gonna start? And we've had those discussions with the board and, and Paintsville Township, and we know, you know, the general plan, nothing's been finalized. But we must address these overcrowded conditions of our schools by creating capacity and being prepared. So, that, that's the point I wanna make, but the other thing that I wanna propose, and it's not been discussed, and I think it's a viable option, is that we're not looking to overcrowd Riverview. What it is, is you could move preschool and house them in a new addition where they have a bathroom in the room, like kindergarten does, with appropriate space, and they arrive a half an hour after your general arrival, they leave a half an hour before dismissal, they do not eat lunch in your, your building because they are an AM and a PM section, and this would alleviate ongoing space issues at Melridge and Buckeye as a first step. While we plan to fix Melridge and Buckeye, there would also be space for the pre-K and kindergarten to have a playground that is right-sized for them, because of the way it could be configured, because usually it creates, you know, a space between existing building and the new building, that there could be that playground and alleviate the crowding on the existing playground. And some of the equipment, when I've gone over there for soccer games for my grandchildren, some of that equipment is not very friendly for the little guys, so, I'm just saying. But I was happy to hear it's all working because there was some kind of repair needed, and it was fixed. So, the additional parking that people complained about, it's always an issue, I know it's an issue at Buckeye as well, or Melridge, especially if you have a program, but as far as the additional parking, and, you know, basically, addressing issues in the cafeteria, all of that could be accomplished while we're doing an addition. So, we're not going to be, you know, we're gonna right-size, I think that's what we're looking at, right-size Riverview, where instead of having 26 and 27 in that 1st grade class, next year when they go to 2nd grade, there should be a classroom for them. We're gonna get another kindergarten, if the trend holds up, the current 1st and 2nd grade are five sections, so, or kindergarten and 1st are five sections, so, a new kindergarten is probably gonna be five sections. So, it's going to be an ongoing issue with the number of homes we're facing, and, you know, it's our responsibility to make sure we have classroom space for these students, and it's a massive amount of students that are development in that area, where so many students are gonna be feeding into that school. And I think it was, was it Donna, had mentioned, I don't know what's going to happen, but at some point, there's not gonna be any room, more room for everybody. But we don't know that for about three years, so we just have to make sure that we're taking this in incremental steps. But Buckeye and Melridge have waited long enough, and those discussions need to start, and the planning needs to happen. But this addition could be ready for next year, Lamuth won't happen for two years, and again, again, please, moment. And I'm just looking at an overall plan, we still have to have discussions about long-term planning, and we wanna make sure that we're continuing down that road. We have a lot of needs. And the last thing I wanna say is the facility assessment, this is the $100,000 Bielski study that was commissioned by the former board, it, in a nutshell, lists by building and with priorities, anything from critical conditions, potentially critical conditions, deteriorating conditions, functional improvements or improved aesthetics, and some of them were listed as grandfather code. It doesn't mean it's up to code, but we don't have to fix it as long as we don't touch it. But the point is, the priorities across the district, with the exception of Riverview and Parkside, there are so many things that need to be done.
Why aren't you addressing that?
And we are trying to address it, but when we tried, we are, the maintenance department's done a good job of pulling in different things, projects, like we've done a lot at Lamuth.
So, we need to discuss with the board, I'm sorry to finish this up, because the discussion is between us, can you finish the discussion here, please?
Alright, thank you. So, all I'm going to say is, they wanted to have this long-term study so that if, let's say, we're going to fix something at Riverside, that that's the school we're keeping, that those, those conversations had to take place.
But again, on this agenda item, what, is there any other discussion?
Yes. Ms. Degrassi, you have something to say?
I have plenty to say. So, out of the Bielski study, the Riverview proposal does nothing to address all of those critical needs. If it's going to take two years to add on to Lamuth, it's going to take at least two years to add on to Riverview, so let's face it. Mrs. Brewster, you were on the Facility Core Committee, at any point in time, you had the ability to bring any of these things up at any time, and they weren't addressed, and if they weren't addressed, I think that's what the board had entrusted you to bring up as a member, as the member of the board who was on that committee, that, if, if that did not happen, I wasn't on that committee, so I can't address that. How does any of what you're saying about any of this, these needs at Riverview and all of these other things, these are not the district's viewpoints, they're not the district's recommendations, we didn't talk about cafeteria space, we didn't talk about anything, this is your opinion about what needs to happen, and we gotta discuss, we gotta discuss any of that at all at this table, which is why I said we need to have further conversation, if that's going to be a viable consideration, then we need to talk about that, but we haven't. None of those things were discussed at the table previously.
Lamuth is part of every long-term plan as well.
So, so, I guess my final, my final statement is that this is absolutely why a long-term plan is necessary, a long-term plan, something, something that addresses what, where this district is headed over time, we know that we have, we have communities that are being built, we know that, we are going to have to address that, but that may actually mean, I don't know, building another elementary school for who knows, but, like, we just don't know that. We don't know what that's going to look like, and instead of having a knee-jerk reaction to, all of a sudden, we have this need, we've always known this is what's happening in this district, and we don't have a long-term plan, because when the last levy failed, thanks to some individuals at this table, the reason that we need to move forward and do a new long-term plan is because the community didn't like the one we had. And I believe that we need to listen to the community and allow them to have the input in a long-term. Before, before we vote on something that we may not, and, and, and the last thing, I guess I'm gonna say is that, moving forward with this, again, because it doesn't address any of the needs that are in that Bielski plan and critical needs that we need to take care of at any of our other, other facilities, Buckeye and Melridge included, as well as the high school, we are going to quite possibly hinder our ability and our borrowing capability by doing other types of borrowing. I, I'm not gonna get into how that happens, but it can affect the way that we are able to borrow for future things going forward, and I want to make sure that we actually have that conversation, if we're gonna be fiscally responsible.
I'd like to add, add a few things. You're right, I wasn't elected, I was put here because of a stalemate at board, two to two, they couldn't agree, they still don't agree. The judge asked me if I could be independent, I told them absolutely, and I am. But, but now, listen, my background is in building, that's why I was chosen, because of my background in buildings.
Your landscape architecture.
And a commercial real estate appraisal.
Thank you.
I know buildings, okay?
Okay, Mr. Keeney, I'm gonna ask you the same thing I asked Ms. Brewster.
Okay, okay, so I'll, I'll address, I'll address the board. Now, my assessment, I can, I've been through buildings all over the East Coast, I've gone through them, I've seen things, now, I've gone, I've gone through all of our buildings, I went through Lamuth, I went through Parkside, prior to school starting, I got a good education there, Lamuth is a good school, there's options there, long-term, that is a good building for the future. Parkside and Riverview, they need to be maintained well. Melridge, I really like that school, it needs updated. Buckeye, there's a lot going for that, but, you know, the Bielski report, I read through that, and absolutely, there is so much that needs to be done with limited money. I'm a taxpayer first, I'm concerned about, you know, the taxes I pay, and I'm not gonna waste money. So, when, when we get down to what needs to be done, I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm for this addition because it'll give us some space, we cannot address Buckeye and, and do what we need to do there unless those modulators are removed. Where do those kids go when those modulators are removed? We need room to place them. Same thing with Lamuth, we could put a little, not Lamuth, but I mean- place them. Same thing with Lamuth. We could put a little, not Lamuth, but I mean, Melridge. You could do a small addition there to absorb some other students because Buckeye needs a total rebuild. And I'm not talking just addition. Once you get into the original building, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. That's all spelled out on this. Same thing with Melridge. Those are beautiful locations, they work, and, and this money, you know, needs to be spent wisely on all of this. So, the addition on Riverview is a step forward because of the development that's coming. I'm waiting for some information from the Lake County Planning and Development Board that, that will give us more demographics, you know, that portion of painful township has a development pressure. Melridge, that community is pretty much built out. We won't see much more pressure there. Buckeye, there's still some, but that will peter out in the near future. So, we know what's coming down the line. We know what to expect, but we have to act on it. And we need to act sooner rather than later. So, you know, I am an independent vote. I studied it. I've looked at them, and that is my opinion, and-
And I would like to know, I would like to know, Mr. Keeney, then how is adding on to Riverview fixing the problems we have at Buckeye and Melridge, which you're telling me exist, but we're not putting any money on those and we're not planning for them either? We didn't address those?
Well, no, no, we're not planning for, but why aren't we planning for? That's what I want to know. Why aren't we planning for?
Then should we not have done that and taken-
I wasn't here on the board. You guys have been on the board longer.
We have a meeting.
Okay, you guys have been on the board longer. Why didn't you plan for this years ago?
Because we had a plan. We had a facilities plan.
Yeah, and it got turned down.
Right. And now we are planning a new one, and Mrs. Brewster, Ms. Brewster sat on that, and she did not bring any of these-
Time is of the essence.
Can we have one, one person speak at a time?
So, none of those things were addressed, none of those things were addressed in the core committee. None of those things were addressed in the community meetings, none of those, if, and I'm not saying if, I know there are issues. We all know there are issues. But shouldn't we take more time and say, is this the best alternative? Or should we be spending that five or six million dollars to do other things at some of the other schools that actually need the help?
Well, I think Buckeye and Melridge need the help.
Well, then why are we at-
But where are you going to put the people in the modulars? Where are you going to put them in the meantime when they have to disappear so we can't put an addition over there?
Then how can we put an addition on to Lamuth or Bridge? At the same ti, it's your ask, you're like, talking out of two sides of your mouth here.
Well, no, no. These are all things that need to have a schedule put out. You know, we have to prioritize. Those two schools, I think, are more important than adding on to Lamuth. That's my personal opinion.
So, I'm going to ask real quick, Mr. Fishel hasn't said anything. Let's give him a chance. I think this is pretty much at a stalemate, so I just want to hear what he has to say to see if there's any kind of persuasion here.
Okay. So, the first thing I want to say is that when I came on to the board, I spent a lot of time, and I mean a lot of time, looking at all the facilities, at all the buildings, and even going through the campus here and inventorying the rooms to see what was here. So, I've spent a lot of time doing that. And I spent a lot of time looking into the previous actions of the boards and what the plans were moving forward and how to address problems. And the unfortunate part was that after the levy got defeated, there was no master plan put forth, okay? And I had the opportunity to talk with Jack Miley, who used to sit on the board. And in that discussion with him and talking about what the current board was doing at that time, and this was several months ago, and I said, "Well, yeah, there's another committee." And he said, "Oh, no, not another committee." He said, "That's all the board wanted to do, was create committees, and it takes another six, eight months, and then another, doesn't, nothing gets done, then another committee, and nothing gets done." He goes, "You guys need to do something," okay? That was a former board member. I spoke with Jim Kales, a former superintendent, and also Jack Miley said Riverview was built to be added on to. And I spoke with Jim Kales, our former superintendent, and he said he would have built Riverview bigger, except the state prevented it. And he said it was intended to be built on to, added on to as it was needed, okay? So, these plans by the previous superintendent and another board member were already in place to add on to Riverview when it was needed, okay? So, now what we have is, we have 1,358 homes going to be built in the casement development. Those students are slated to enter, start to enter Riverview in 2026, in 2026.
Okay, again, I'm just going to ask you guys, please.
In 2026.
Is this just to the table? Because we're discussing at the table.
So, in 20, in 2026, those students are, are scheduled to start to come into Riverview. And, and so that, we are already what is called minus three classrooms at Riverview. What does that mean? Two special needs classrooms were taken away, the music room was taken away, and we have an overcrowded situation, okay? It needs to be alleviated. We have many needs, okay, and we have to start somewhere. Where is the best place to start? The best place to start is when you alleviate, you solve an overcrowded situation, you create capacity so that you can handle the students that are coming in. And that's not just a one-year plan. That would be a four or five-year solution. And in the meantime, when you add eight classrooms and, and you're our negative three, you're going to be a plus five. You'll have five classrooms available. And what does that do? It helps out Buckeye. Because you could take the, the pre-K from Buckeye, the pre-K from Melridge, it helps them both, and put them over at Riverview, okay, while we develop the plan, while, as the board develops a plan to take care of Buckeye. Why do you have to take care of Buckeye? When, when Katie was speaking, I agree 100%. We have little kids in the wintertime have to get out of a modular, walk through the weather, go into the building, and go to the bathroom, come out of that bathroom, go back outside to go to their classroom. It's not acceptable, okay? It's not acceptable. I think Ms. Brewster touched on one thing that's going on over there. There are dividers, so there could be four different things going on in one room, okay? That's not acceptable. That does not help our education. When I got on the board, my goal for this board and for the district was to make Riverside the gold standard. How can we be the gold standard? We need to improve. We need to improve the facilities, but we have to take the first step. We have to improve our, our scoring, okay? And this has been mentioned before. We're 71st economically. We were the last time I saw, the numbers were 246th in testing. At par, we should be 71st economically and 71st in testing.
So, again, the discussion is on the facilities.
And so, I'm talking about the facilities because the facilities will help educate our children. Every single student in this district should have the best opportunity for the best education possible. And we need the proper facilities to do that. When we alleviate the overcrowding and we don't have to have 26 and 27 elementary grade kids in a classroom, that's going to help the teachers teach better. The students will be able to learn better. So, that's what the first step is. After that, you take a look at the Buckeye and Melridge situation and solve that problem. That helps to right-size the whole district because we have new elementary over at Riverview, new elementary at Parkside, and, and Melridge and, and Buckeye have been left behind, left behind and left behind. And that needs to stop. So, we need, we need to change that, and that's the goal. Start over at Riverside, then look forward and have some long-term planning. Now, as far, as far as the board and the administration is looking at a five-year facilities plan, a five-year facilities plan by its very nature is a long-term plan, okay? We have an immediate need right now to alleviate overcrowding and other problems. One of the items that was brought up over at Riverview is we have a parking issue. We have a traffic issue, okay? Some of this can be alleviated. I'm working on something right now. I think I'll have a solution. I can't say it right now. And, and this will, for the board, for the board, this will alleviate the parking issue over there. It'll alleviate some of the traffic issue over there. And in the future, in the future, as the development is made, it'll further help alleviate the traffic problem over there. We need to be forward-looking. We need to have a vision. We need to be able to execute a vision with good planning, okay? And then we need to be able to get the job done. So, that's a couple items. And there were a few things said, which, one is, I'll touch on the owner's rep. Someone, someone mentioned, okay, well, I'm talking to the board here about this.
But we need to talk about this. This is about, this is about this.
No, no, this is exactly about this, because you need an owner's rep to build this addition, okay? And, and so, when, when it's said that there's not an owner's rep in place, that's not true. There's an owner's rep in place right now. And in regards to this addition, in regards to this addition, I have spoken with the owner's rep, and I have spoken with the architect, okay? And they both believe this, this building can be ready and open for the next school year, okay? And, and so, they-
Okay, so, I, I might call for a vote. I mean, I think the-
Okay, so-
All right, I'm going to call for the vote on this, please. So, Mr. Placko-
So, I still have discussion, and I, and I raised it.
The discussion is on.
So, I raised it.
Mr. Placko, can you please call roll?
Ms. Crinisky, you do not have the power to do that, as president.
Yes, I do. Yes, I do.
You can put off discussion?
Yes, and call for roll. So, can you please call the roll, Mr. Placko?
Because you already know what we're doing.
Can you?
Thank you.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Dennis Keeney?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Placko, end it.
Lori?
Nay.
Linda Grassi?
No.
Motion carried. That brings us to the Board of Education. We have the OSBA Legislative Platform propose 2025 changes. Who's going to let us do that?
(inaudible)
Okay. So, resolution to approve additional language on lines 688 through 689 on Ohio OSBA. Excuse me, can, we still have some more business to do?
No, we don't have to say here. We should be ashamed of this.
I hope we can like the trailer.
Okay.
We're in on it, right?
I'm going to add, ten more trailers here. Fifteen years Buckeye's overcrowded. Just keep waiting.
Buy your plan.
I'm really sorry, I didn't hear that. I'll say my name.
Good question.
Mrs. Brewster, I listen to you, I listen to you. I have grandchildren in Riverview. I listen to your every word. This is disgusting.
That's for me to toss out.
All right. I make the resolution to approve additional language on lines 688 through 689 on the OSBA Legislative Platform to support legislation that allows districts to charge for labor costs strictly associated with receiving and fulfilling a public records request. Any discussion on that?
Okay, just a little quick background. So, each year at the OSBA Capitol Conference, there's a legislative platform that's reviewed by the delegates. Ms. Brewster's our delegate for this year's conference. And basically, legislative platform is a guideline for OSBA for them to lobby for public school legislation. So, these are the changes, and as a board, we review those changes, just so the delegate knows how they're going to vote at the, at the conference and not sitting there, not knowing what the entire board intentions are. So, there's, there's actually two changes that we'll vote on tonight, and I had them as separate items. And then we have a third one that in the Finance Committee, we recommended to add to the legislative platform based on those changes. So, the first one that has been motioned, the second, it's a, you know, asking the OSBA to support legislation that allows districts to charge for the labor cost for public records requests. In the Finance Committee, we kind of talked, you know, me personally, while public records requests can be very time-consuming and labor-intensive, charging labor costs for that would be a barrier to open and transparent government. So, I'm actually recommending the board vote no on this, this item because, I mean, I don't think the district would ever be in a good position to implement that policy if it was allowed to because, you know, if I spend eight hours on a public records request, is someone going to pay for my salary for eight hours? That's a barrier. No one's going to pay that. You know, the only thing we charge is for copy costs. Typically, we don't actually charge anybody after costs. It's usually maintenance. So, that's the first item. And then we can review the second one.
Well, in addition to that, we would become a, a collection agency because people wouldn't want to pay.
They would open up, you know, why did the treasurer or the superintendent got a records request and not somebody else?
Yeah. And then, and then the other thing is, someone that truly doesn't have the money to pay for it, it'd be unfair to them.
Right.
So, we're saying, your recommendation here, here is to say nay, right?
Correct.
That we don't, we don't, we don't agree with this. Although you know it's going to pay. They're going to have to get it into law, so, yeah. All right. Any other discussion? All right, can you call roll, please?
Scott Fishel?
Nay.
Dennis Keeney?
Nay.
Lori Crinisky?
Nay.
Linda Grassi?
Nay.
Denise Brewster?
Nay.
Motion failed. Resolution to approve additional language on lines 964 through 967 of the OSBA Legislative Platform to support legislation that requires school tax levy money, which has been voted upon to be used for funding of schools, be exempt from tax increment financing, allowed under ORC 5709.40 and Community Reinvestment Act CRA abatements. And again, this one, we, your recommendation is to vote nay because it does not include RIDS.
I would recommend, yes, I would.
Yeah, this is-
This is, yes, and then add-
Oh, there's another one, okay.
Add the RIDS to the next one.
Yep. So, explain the-
Do we get a second on this?
I'll second.
So, right now, there's a, under Ohio law, there's what's called tax increment financing. And basically, a political subdivision can do a tax exemption, or it's basically a tax exemption, but really more of a tax redirection. So, basically, it's a, they go up at 75% for 10 years. So, basically, when a new housing development comes in or new commercial development, they can do what's called a TIF. And basically, that new revenue that the school district would get, they can defer 75% of that to the township or to a city or whoever for infrastructure improvements to support that development. And you only get 25% of that new revenue.
Like what Concord's doing.
And Concord's doing it with the, they call it residential improvement district. It's actually residential incentive district, which is a similar, which is very similar to a TIF. So, this is basically asking the OSBA to support legislation to kind of prevent that redirection of-
Now, would RIDS not be a part of this?
Based on the way this is written, no. And that's why we're proposing the next residential incentive.
Okay, okay. So, next one addresses them, okay.
Can you call roll, please?
So, you're recommending, what kind of vote?
I'd recommend you vote yes on this one, and then we would, the next one do the same.
Okay.
Dennis Keeney?
Yes.
Lori Crinisky?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Motion carried. Resolution to approve proposing an additional amendment to the OSBA Legislative Platform to be considered at the OSBA Annual Business Meeting in November to support legislation that requires school tax levy money, which has been voted upon to be used for funding of schools, be exempt from residential improvement districts allowed under ORC 5709.73. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you. And again, this is the one that's saying we want to take and say, hey, let's add the RIDS.
Right. There's actually a full resolution attached in board docs and basically say, hey, the OSBA Legislative Platform Committee approved this recommendation for additional language, but failed to include RIDS, residential improvement districts, or incentive districts. And so, we're asking that that gets added. Now, assuming we approve this tonight at the delegate assembly-
She's going to have to-
I believe you said to the OSBA ahead of time.
Well, okay, so my understanding is-
I have to clarify exactly, but there's a letter from the OSBA that basically says to add it at the meeting. They need a two-thirds vote of who's intended, and then a 75% yes vote to actually-
Had we wanted to include this on the platform agenda, we would have had to have submitted this well prior to May, probably, and then they would have had, then they would have done that work over the summer to determine whether or not they would have included that language.
Correct.
But we didn't do that. So, so basically, you're going to have to propose this from the floor. From the floor, okay.
And then like, and I'll find out logistics, I think, because in the letter from OSBA it kind of explained, I'm going to reach out to them after this and find out for sure. That way, we can ensure it's, it's proposed correctly and hopefully voted by them.
Now, regardless of that, you always need a 75% vote to approve?
Typically, no, because it's being added at the meeting.
So, what's the threshold without it being added at the meeting?
Majority.
It's just-
75% votes don't matter. I see that already.
Great. Any other discussion on this? All right, can we call roll, please?
Lori Crinisky?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Dennis Keeney? Aye.
Motion carried. Any Board of Education updates? All right. So, next working session is October 8, 2024 at 6:00 PM to go over our report card. Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting, October 15, 2024 at 7:30 AM. Curriculum and Programs Committee meeting, October 16 at 7:30 AM. Finance and Personnel Committee meeting, October 16 at 8:30 AM. And Board of Education meeting, October 24 at 6:00 PM. Make a motion to adjourn at 9:51 PM. Can I get a second?
Second.
And Mr. Placko, can you call roll for me?
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Dennis Keeney?
Aye.
Lori Crinisky?
Aye. Motion carried.